We need to be starting three or four minutes late, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was here. So, welcome to this afternoon's Puro Roro Amua Planning and Environment Committee. It feels like we've been here already for quite a long time, given we've had a regulatory processes meeting. I was, and we did a lot of work. Anyway, a warm welcome, obviously, to councillors, staff, members of the public, very importantly, to this meeting. Right, I am going to do the karakia now. [Singing] Whakataku te hau, kiti uru, whakataku te hau, kiti tonga, ki ma kina kina, ki uta, ki amā tara tara, ki tai, e hei aki ana, tiata kura, he tio, he huka, he hohu, ti hei maori ora. Right, do we... Oh, oh! Kia ora, councillor Day, for that. I'm sorry, I have been used to so much sitting for the last few months. Right, apologies, we do have a few, potentially, so... So, I'm going to move. Mayor Foster is attending a meeting, a council meeting, obviously. Councillor Foon and councillor Young are leaving at five, and councillor Wolf, what time are you leaving? Oh, we can't hear you, Simon.
Five thirty.
Okay, kia ora for that.
Madam Chair, I thought we'd agreed that we were running till 5:15 and that'll be it.
I would like to get the meeting done today, but shall we see how we go?
Ah, well, I've made arrangements at 5:15.
Okay, all right, so we'll just...
Madam Chair, if I could say I need to go at 3:30, I can still stay on a Zoom call while I'm walking till 3:45, and then I'm out until probably about 4:30, and then again from 5:30.
Okay, all right. Right, so would it be better that we finish at five and then debate again tomorrow?
Not how close we are.
Okay, let's see how we go. All right, I'm going to move those apologies. If I could have a second, please. Councillor O'Neill, thank you.
I know, I'm...
It is very nice to be back in here.
You've missed me, haven't you? I know.
Oh, councillor Wolf, have you voted about the apologies? And Liz Kelly? Thank you. Liz, are you there? Oh, yes, thank you very much. Right, good, okay. Conflict of interest declarations, any to declare? That's pretty easy today, good. Now, the confirmation of minutes, so I move that we approve the minutes of Puro Roro Amua Planning and Environment from the 3rd of November. Thank you councillor Day. If you could please vote. Liz Kelly? Wonderful, thank you very much. Oh, and is it yes too? Good, thank you. There are no items not on the agenda, and now my pleasure to welcome our public participants today. Pat Venatio, a warm welcome to you.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We certainly can.
Oh, excellent, fantastic. Great time, good afternoon.
Thank you.
Well, I probably might not even need 10 minutes, but anyway, we'll see how we go. My name's Pat Venatio, and I am the owner of The Empire Cinema in Etrirri at 214 The Parade Island Bay, and have been since 2014. I've been in Island Bay all my life. I'm the largest business on the parade with 20 full and part-time staff. Last Thursday, I was taken back when on national radio councillor Pannett mentioned there were two options that were going for council discussion on the parade upgrade. Furthermore, she said that the businesses had been consulted on the design. I'm here to say that I have not been consulted. I have written statements from 14 retailers on the parade to say that they also have not been consulted. The Empire Cinema is a destination venue, and it needs a reason for people to visit. Car parking is one of these reasons, and relies on it to be successful. The national average for moviegoers to visit a suburban cinema is four times per year. Island Bay has 7,200 people, so that's 28,800 movie admissions per year. Pre-COVID, we saw admissions at 90,000 per annum, so 60,000 people travelled from outside of Island Bay. Last year, we saw the Empire Cinema declined by 70% due to COVID, and with substantial financial losses. We managed to get through, and importantly, retain our staff. This year, we are tracking to 30% below pre-COVID levels, and the movie slate for the 2022 is very good. We are also tracking to get back to pre-COVID levels early next year. On top, we have a loyal following of locals that use the cinema as a meeting place, their daily coffee, scone, breakfast, lunch, dinner, or just a pop-in for a gelato. This part, on average, is 200 people per day. So, in total, we have an average 450 people per day use the Empire. We have, and would like more, on average, only 20 people arrive on bike, or just over 4%. Furthermore, I've seen other businesses open in the area due to the influx of people that visit the Empire, which generates economic benefit for the area. In short, other businesses rely on the Empire. The Empire is an asset to the community, and I want to keep it. I see it all the time, properties in Island Bay have been advertised for sale with Empire Cinema being a marketing tool. I've never seen the cycleway used in the same way. In the short time I've had preparing for today, I've only viewed the Tonkin and Taylor report, and as also a commercial property developer, I suspect the report would be into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yet, there is no mention of business impacts or any consultation on this design. As part of your duty, you are required to consult. The Love the Bay consultation back in 2017, and subsequent approved Leicester Design, did not mention any of the massive changes in the Tonkin-Taylor options. So therefore, I believe the report is illegal, and therefore cannot be used or implemented. This will be another waste of taxpayers' money, and the people responsible should be held accountable. We all know how contentious the Island Bay cycleway has become, and I remember to her credit the previous mayor, Celia Wade Brown, apologising to the community, and at a council meeting, and looked at all the councillors, of which some of you were there, and said, "We need to do better." Unfortunately, that saying didn't sink in, and in fact, it's got worse. You have divided the community that I love and invested heavily in, and it's sad to see what you've done to it. You have now divided the businesses in the community, it's a disgrace. If one of these options are approved, you will force me to take action to protect my investment, my staff, and the Island Bay people's empire. Sorry, I'm not going to take any questions. Happy debating, and have a good day.
Thank you, Pat, we really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Right, now we're going to hear from Bruce Gadd from the Island Bay Businesses and Residents Association. Sorry, we can't hear you yet, Bruce.
Good evening councillors and others, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you today. Now, the Island Bay Residents and Businesses Association has put in a submission, and I gather that's been tabled. Am I...
We've received it by email. We can certainly table it if you wish.
Yep, can you table it? I mean, it provides very much the basis of our submission. I mean, principally, I can run quickly through the submission, and then there's a few extra comments I'd just like to make just to support it. I mean, principally, what we are suggesting is that we now, we thank councillors to acknowledge that there is a problem with the cycleway as it stands at the moment, and that you are actually looking at options. And we're also aware that the council is considering a number of other activities in Island Bay, including the light rail. And what we are suggesting, I guess, is that these two options should be considered together. I mean, if we're going to have a major disruption in terms of the cycleway, and then have light rail introduced down the track, it seems almost sensible to actually look at both of those options together. I mean, in the meantime, what we're asking is that the cycleway be returned to its original position pre-2016, which is basically the cars against the side of the road and a cycleway up the side. The option two includes, we've got very wide path, but it's walkways, which can provide support for younger members of the public, or the Island Bay residents actually riding on the footpath, if that was desired, and also the reduction of the speed limit to 40 kilometres an hour through the Island Bay, well, through the whole of the Island Bay area. We think because of the problems that have been caused by this, that the council does need to look at a reset for Island Bay. I agree with all of what Pat's just said, but also I just suggest that it hasn't actually divided the community, because 87% of the community identify that the cycleway as it stands, they didn't want it, and that was in the submissions that council asked for. It's also, I know that you're considering the $3 million effects, and I know councillor Simon's comments regarding the $3 million effects doing absolutely nothing to improve the safety of the current cycleway. I mean, I think we can all agree, well, I hope we all can, that the cycleway as it stands is a failed experiment, and that something drastic is needed to fix it. I mean, it's not being replicated anywhere else in Wellington, or anywhere else in New Zealand, or anywhere internationally. And I think it's almost made us a bit of a laughing stock. I think the other consideration, too, is that we need to be looking at new technologies, too. And I mean, I'm not sure where the cycles are the future in Wellington. I mean, we're looking at electric bikes, electric cars, self-drive, all these other options which will come in the future. In regards to the number of cyclists actually using it, we received some figures from the cycle lobby in Island Bay, which identified that there were 10,000 cycle trips per month in and out of Island Bay, which, well, 10,000 trips, which equates to 5,000 trips in, 5,000 trips out, which over a monthly period identifies that there is around 166 return trips a day, which suggests that there is about 82 people regularly losing the cycleway. If you take this to a logical extent, the $14 million upgrade to the cycleway means that the council will be spending something like $170,000 per cyclist to provide a cycleway that there is no evidence to produce that it's any safer than the one that we had pre-2016. The option to revert to where we were pre-cycleway and wait for all these other activities to occur is basically cost-neutral. I mean, all we're doing, we understand that the cycleway, or the roadway is going to be resealed, it would best be a matter of actually redoing the lines. The... And I'm pretty sure that there are other major pressing issues for this council to address in terms of... And we're kind of concerned that people in the Granville Flats, which desperately need some overhaul, I mean, looking and seeing $14 million spent on a cycleway, or even $2 million of that other options being put forward. And there's a number of suburbs that don't have the benefit of any cycleway, so I'm not sure why we are so special. But look, you've got our submission, that basically outlines what we are saying. But can I also take this opportunity to finish on a really positive note, and thank the council for its support of the Island Bay South Coast Dance Trail, which is very dear to my heart, and which will be happening in February next year. And with council support, I mean, I think it's going to be a huge success in that we invite all the councillors to attend. So that's my... But I'm happy to take questions.
Kia ora, thank you very much for that. Councillors, any questions? And short ones, please. Councillor Rush.
Thanks, Bruce. Does your organisation have a broad range of members, including those from the cycle fraternity?
Yes, we do. We have two businesspeople, we have a... Well, Stephen Day is on the committee, who's a very strong supporter of the cycleway as it stands now. And in terms of this submission, Stephen supports the first part of considering it with light rail at the same time, but as opposed to actually reverting back to how it was before.
Thank you.
So it's a majority decision, yeah, and we have a fairly broad one. And with the nominations for next year, we've got even a broader base residents association aging from 16 to 70, so we're looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Free.
Thank you, Bruce. Would you describe Island Bay as quite a desirable suburb? In fact, you know, quite a place where people really want to live at the moment?
Well, house prices would probably suggest that, yes, I mean, I think that, I would.
And I was just going to suggest to you that, would you agree that the cycleway hasn't put people off wanting to live in Island Bay?
It hasn't put people off, but it's certainly become a major issue of talk within the community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Foster.
Yeah, look, thanks, Bruce, just a very quick one, and that's, we've been given a clear advice that there are some, at very least, some issues around safety in terms of resealing, etc., that need to be done, and then it's just a matter of what we decided to put on top of that. So you're comfortable with doing, at very least, the minimum, if you like, to progress that? I know we've got the issue of inside or outside the car, but you're comfortable with us at least doing the very minimum?
Well, I think the issue, too, though, was even with the $3 million upgrade that you're talking about, we're actually losing a number of car parks, and that goes back to Pat's position, too. Which I think, you know, when you're going to put light, if you're considering light rail at the same time, that's going to make a huge difference to the parade. So if you're going to look at all these things together, it's... We need an overall plan and a long-term plan for Island Bay, but just doing it bit by bit. And we still haven't got any movement from the end of Island Bay through to Berimpor and things, and I'm not quite sure how that, or when that's going to be addressed.
Yes, I think Island Bay got so hard, we gave up on that at the moment.
I think that's the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Actually, Bruce, can I just ask you a couple? So you said you wanted to revert back to the old cycleway, but as I recall, there never was a full cycleway along the parade. Can you just clarify what you mean by that?
Well, I think, it's, well, from my recollection, and I've only, I lived in Island Bay for 15 years, and then went away for a while, and I've come back. So, but the cycleway went, I think, as far as it has done, that it does now. So it's 1.7 kilometres, and it ends at around D Street.
And the 87% figure that you quoted, that was consultation from a few years ago? Can you remember?
Yeah, that was a consultation that happened after the options that council put forward. And if you recall, that when all the submissions came in, 87% of them actually asked to be reverted back to how it was before.
So that was 87% of submissions, 87% of the community?
Yeah, I think that if you, you know, this can be raised again, we can go back to it, but that, yeah, that's the best, the best figure that we have.
Lovely, and just one more question. You'll probably be aware that the government and the city has some quite ambitious climate goals. So when you talk about the long-term plan for Island Bay, particularly as a coastal suburb, you're just wanting an overall masterplan to look at how the light rail might work and the other modes, is that...
No, I think the other thing is that what the Island Bay Residents Association's been looking at, too, was this COVID plan and all the rest of it that's come in, or COVID, I mean, more people are working at home. We've been looking at how we can actually reduce the traffic going in and out of Island Bay by actually getting people either working at home, developing a hub like they have in Johnsonville. There is a number of other suggestions of how we can get people to, you know, less people driving in and out. I mean, I've got no argument with people who want to reduce the amount of car use within Island Bay, and nor does the Island Bay Residents Association.
But do people have a right to cycle in and out of there safely? Just, that's the last question.
Oh, absolutely, and that's what we're looking at. I think if you saw that the engineer's report, that you've had another submission from one of Island Bay residents that actually indicated if you reduced the speed to 40 kilometres, it would make no difference to the safety issues for cyclists.
Okay, lovely. Thank you so much for giving up your valuable time for us this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Right, Alex Dyer, are you there?
Kia ora.
Kia ora, welcome.
Tēnā koutou, ko Alex Dyer, taku ingoa, noa pāpu tēranga au. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak today, both as co-chair of Cycle Wellington and as a resident of Island Bay. And thank you for all the hard work that councillors and councillors, sorry, council offices and councillors have been making on this, and so many fully engaging with Cycle Wellington and other members of the community, obviously. Yeah, I agree that everyone is looking forward to some clarity and progress for this. So my plea is to be decisive today and send a clear message that the city is pushing forward, taking biking as a serious, you know, as mobility as a serious topic. Bike lanes are climate action. Island Bay is an opportunity to send a clear message that you're prioritising people getting around in healthy, sustainable ways. And Cycle Wellington wants to see momentum on the whole of the bike network. I'm just being optimistic, I think there's, you know, going to be a continuing growth in investment in active transport and public transport for the foreseeable future, if we're taking climate action seriously. So, yeah, I'm interested, that feeling like money is less of the issue now, it's about implementation capacity. And I'd like to see the council work hard to enable work to happen in more places in the city for active transport concurrently. So the potential mass transit, to maybe make it down here one day, shouldn't derail progress on a well-formed set of designs that the community has contributed a huge amount of effort to. You know, so a good outcome from those designs should be a clear goal from this work. Good cycling provision serves all sorts of people in Island Bay, not just workers commuting to and from the central city, but part-timers, different shifts, people outside of formal employment, you know, parents with kids. And like Bruce was just saying there, there's lots of people working from home more often now, and making shorter journeys in their neighbourhoods since the pandemic began. So wherever the council lands today, please ensure it provides a decisive way forward. What to deliver? So the parade upgrade needs to be delivered, and the future city-wide bike network needs to be connected. A decision today should best deliver the parade upgrade as part of that network all at once now, or in stages down the rail line. And a really big thing for Cycle Wellington, obviously, is that safety is, you know, safety improvement is a must. It's just not an optional, you know, not debatable. Connecting the cycleway through the shops we consider to be a safety issue. And that's also, it's also a really significant connection when we think of Island Bay currently as two cycleways cut in the middle. So also, just to put in a bit about emphasizing with mitigation of car parking, we recommend the council should be, you know, prudent when addressing this. Transforming car parking to healthy uses on public streets should be considered a net positive outcome. When provisioning quality walking and cycling facilities, enabling more people to get about in healthy and sustainable ways, there should be lower demand for car storage. And we'd probably remain concerned when that isn't happening. So as part of working towards that, I think developing a local area parking plan that follows the new parking policy would be a helpful way to be more proactive about car storage issues. So how to proceed? Council's just got to get on with doing something. Doing nothing is not an option. And we can't, yeah, we can't, what we can't have is for nothing to happen on the ground until detailed designs for an even larger, long-term proposed project are signed off in several years' time. We've already been through that process with the new town connections pause. So we can live with the parade being delivered in pragmatic stages that provides safer, more comfortable cycling for more members of the community, minimises disruption on the ground, and pays the way towards even more healthy mobility improvements, such as mass rapid transit. A staged implementation is not the same as a compromised solution. So we'd like to see a council and struck offices include short-term improvements as soon as possible in the upcoming resurfacing project, without negatively impacting the full delivery of the parade upgrade. That could include some tactical methods, as will be being used in the bike network approach. We'd like to see work on the ground starting as soon as possible, and I think that would, we think that'll lend momentum to the bike network interim projects. So, yeah, just to reiterate, you know, to prioritize features supporting people making local bike journeys at all times, especially children, women, disabled people, and older people. And yes, note there to please be mindful of the yet-to-be-passed accessible street package with the Ministry of Transport at the moment, as that could, yeah, have some bearing on how we're able to treat priorities for people getting straight through at intersections. So, yeah, we're grateful for your leadership here today. Yeah, we need confidence that the parade upgrade remains a commitment to the council. Please choose to deliver that commitment in a pragmatic way, starting as soon as possible. And wherever you land today, please ensure it provides a decisive way forward. Kia ora. I'd also just like to, if I may, mention the fossil fuel central city paper. And just a brief note that we welcome this work and encourage council to make concerted efforts in this area. And we would just like to point out that while reducing climate-damaging emissions from fossil fuels is a critical imperative, there are many other benefits to reducing the overall volume of heavy vehicles in the central city. So, you know, electrifying the same number of heavy vehicles and the same size of all those heavy vehicles as we have today shouldn't be seen as the objective there. That's all I've got to say about that one today. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and open to questions.
Thank you. Alex, councillor Matthews.
Thanks, Alex. I guess I just, I'm a little bit confused, because if we phase in Island Bay, it becomes harder and harder to resist being affected by mass rapid transit, because we'll become, you know, if that is the way the route goes, it'll become harder and harder to make changes while we wait for those. So it seems like those two points are a little bit contradictory.
Yes, the, I think the main thing that, I was looking through the options before, and I know there's discussion of the, you know, the full treatment being, I think it's six I, which is... being, um, I think it's six I, which is, uh, you know, a huge, huge investment. Um, I think the, um, the main thing that we're getting at is we'd like to see the, see progress on the grounds as, um, as pragmatic. We're, we're less, we're less concerned about a greater loss of car parking and see that as a win. So, um, yeah, if it, if that helps to, um, to clarify that.
So can I, that was also kind of my question. So just following on from councillor Matthews, you would see the phased, um, implementation that we could start now, figure out sort of what's going with light rail and then we've still got, whatever happens, we've got the money and the budget and so we can work in with the project team potentially to make sure that there's good cycling facilities along with any MRT.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, so the, all the money in the budget, if that stays there, I'm, I'm sure will, will, uh, be used well for place making and accommodating light rail. Um, and yeah, I just, um, hope that, uh, I, yeah, I just, I sort of see how like overseas, so many, um, situations where biking and light rail or MRT are, are quite, you know, live in quite harmonious, you know, quite a harmonious way. So, um, surely there's a way that, um, we are choosing, um, to, to implement something that is compatible with that in the future, um, but not contingent on it.
Thank you. Um, really appreciate your participation along with Bruce. Thank you very much. Right, Stephen Piper, are you online?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, wonderful. So you've got five minutes. Welcome, Stephen.
I don't think you can see me there, can you? Let's have a look here. How's that? I don't know about that background.
From space, thank you.
Hi, Captain. My iPad. Uh, anyway, um, thank you for the time today. Uh, my name is Stephen Piper. I'm the third generation Island Bay resident. My wife and I have four kids. We've grown them up in, in, in Island Bay. We love Island Bay. We used to love the stunning wide parade. We used to drive down there. Um, I believe in climate change and I want to do what's right. Um, I still believe that electric cars are going to be, they'll be coming and they are coming. You can see overseas a trend. But currently, the expense of health and safety producer, cyclists and motor vehicle owners, the parade is a hazard and we know that. Prior to 2016, there was no recorded data of accidents on the parade. Then we come to February sixteen to March nineteen, Island Bay cycleway installed twenty-nine accidents, twelve involving cyclists, two very serious cyclist vespership hospitalised cases, currently no deaths. So we're very lucky, um, but it could happen. Two thousand eighteen, um, one of the city council did your own public submission. Uh, option E was put on there by the residents association, I believe. It's a bit out there, but backed by about three thousand six hundred residents. So well over eighty percent of the votes voted for option E and that was to paint it back, give it back to us, um, and, you know, consult properly. You know, I heard seven years ago, build it and they will come. Well, today, there's only fifty cyclists that use it each way and that's on a fine day. So if it's raining, if it's windy, I can, I can tell you those numbers will reduce. Again, I'm really concerned that the community hasn't been consulted on the following, on the three options. The option A is three million dollars. Well, that equates to sixty thousand dollars per cyclist. Okay. Um, we're going to lose more car parks. Well, you know, we've got a bowling club, we've got churches, we've got a cinema, there's other retail down there. Um, losing car parks is just an incomplete vision. Residents will not get rid of their cars. Commuters still drive to Island Bay down the hill to get a bus to town. Those still drive to Island Bay. Where are they going to park? The option B, fourteen million dollars, fifty cyclists, that's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per cyclist spend on tripping hazards, a barrier. Well, it's gonna, it's tripping hazards for early, um, wheelchairs, I'm going to see more injuries. I mean, how to parent some of your children, his wheelchairs, um, at night, no visibility, just a disaster waiting to happen. And then I believe, I think, um, and I've got to say, you know, one year later, we're still, one year later, we're still waiting for our pipes in Suburn Street to be fixed. I mean, it's been one year and, and you're looking at spending three or fourteen million dollars. I don't get it. Option C, do nothing. But again, no one's listened to the Island Bay residents. No one has listened to us. The majority want it painted back. Spend a million dollars, let's do option, do option E again or option D, if you call it, paint it back, reduce the speed limit to forty. That, you know, EZTA is going to love it, you know, and wait, wait till let's get Wellington Moving comes in with, um, you know, a plan so we can all be consulted. Um, it's really time to listen to the Island Bay residents, I think, and, and not those who don't live here. That's, that's simple. Sorry. There's my red. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Right, councillor Calvert, then councillor Rush.
Um, thank you. Um, have you noticed, and with the new buses introduced in two thousand eighteen, the double deckers, and I think they're slightly wider, have you noticed any, um, any further impact on, on how the parade is used?
Oh, look, absolutely. Um, it, it stalls the traffic. I mean, you have to, you can't get around a bus when it's pulling into, into a bus stop. There's no way you can do that, um, without going across the other side of the road and causing an accident. So, um, I, I think the amount of people that it transports is, is good. Um, I think they've invested in some good electricity componentry down the end of the parade. Um, so I think that the double-decker buses are great. Um, I, I believe if the cycleway was moved, sorry, the car parking was back on the curve, there's still plenty of room. There's still plenty of room for cyclists to, to go in their parade, as they have for a hundred years, when we had trams and what father had trams there. They were, they're on cycles. So, you know, certainly, I, I noticed yesterday too, an ambulance going down the parade. Whoa, my goodness. We're pulling out to the side. There's not much gap there. There's not much gap at all. So, um, but, but I think that's been addressed in the past.
Thank you, councillor Rush.
Thanks, Steve. Um, so the, the painter back option, I was reading the judgment and the, um, the, the court seemed to find that the old, um, the original plan was unsafe. So is there a case to paint back but with some improvements to accommodate those?
Sorry, Shaun, you were just saying if, if there was a little bit spent just to fix size.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I, I understand that was one of the options, uh, that was put out for consultation, uh, back in, I don't know, two thousand seventeen, but, um.
Was that, was that with Love the Bay? I don't think that was quite correct. There's, there's probably A, B, C and D. And I think majority wanted option E. So, and, and look, there's still a lot of blind spots, Humbert Street, coming out there, or, um, just, I think it's Humbert Street, one of the streets where you had to go nearly into the halfway of the road to look left or right before you can go. So, yeah, it's just, yeah, it's really hard work. It's not safe.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Really appreciate you coming in and talking to us today.
Yep, I'm sorry about the back light there, people.
Oh, no, 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 it's very flattering.
You know, no worries at all. I have a good afternoon. Thank you.
You too. Appreciate it. James Peterson from Larita and Floriditas. Larita, sorry. Is James there? What time is he supposed to come? At two ten? Oh, yeah.
I think I'm here, start video. All right. Kia ora.
Kia ora.
Um, thank you for having me.
It's a pleasure. You've got ten minutes to speak. Thank you.
Um, hopefully that will be more than sufficient. I will leave plenty of time for questions. Um, so I wrote a piece for Dominion Post where I suggested pedestrianising Cuba Street from Wakefield Street to Webb Street. Um, and that was fundamentally about creating Cuba Street as the place that it could be. Um, you know, when you meet people from other cities, I've got friends in Christchurch, and they always say to me, what I love about Wellington is its walkability, like you can walk around it. Don't think I've ever heard somebody from Auckland or Christchurch or elsewhere say, I really like Wellington because you can drive around it. Um, so, you know, and I've, I've been in Cuba Street for a long time now, probably almost two decades, and I've often looked at and thought, there's not really much return on this car parking. You know, I sort of looked at it from a purely economic standpoint, that, that they take up a lot of space, but they don't give very much back. And, you know, on a busy weekend, it wouldn't be rocket science to work out that a significant proportion of those customers have not driven and parked outside, you know, either my restaurant or the other restaurant or Madame Fancy Pants or, or Slow Boat Records. And so I suppose for me, this all began about looking at the street as a place and not as a road, and how could we make it a place? Because we don't have, you know, particularly in our part of Cuba Street, which I feel is kind of like the epicentre of Wellington culturally, there aren't many places where you can just be, uh, you know, sit and talk or, you know, if you had small children, because increasingly there are lots of apartments springing up around our neighbourhood, you know, and we lack green spaces and we lack, and they don't have to be green, you know, there can be other spaces. So I think it was just taking this, the, the view of it being a road and turning it into a place, really. Um, and, you know, I understand, you know, I've talked to another, other, other business owners since that article. Some think it's a great idea, some don't. You know, like I didn't, I don't expect everybody to agree with me, for goodness sakes, democracy. And, you know, I think that once I, you can talk them through that, yes, that means that deliveries can still happen and, you know, what happens if my fridge breaks down? Can the plumber, or, you know, the electricians still come? And how do we manage those logistical things? I mean, they're super important and, you know, getting those things right, you know, from the outset is really important. Um, but really, it just comes back to how can we just make it, how can we make, and particularly, you know, I suppose it's self-interest, my part of Cuba Street, which seems unnecessary to drive down from the get-go. It's, it doesn't really, from a logistical point of view, I don't, I don't really feel it, it gets anybody anywhere any better, um, which is terrible English. Sorry, excuse that phrasing. Could we just not slow that down, broaden the footpath and just make it a better place, um, for people to be able to walk up and down? I mean, I'm not sure how many of you, I, I mentioned in my article, I don't know how many of you have stood outside Scopa, uh, pedestrian rush hour, but it's, you know, like it's a tailback. It's, it's, it's not been designed and it was even worse when it was state highway and you couldn't get across. Um, so I just feel that it's almost like, you know, the car, it's number one, everything revolves around the car and then the pedestrian is in a distant third place. And I, I, I think this was just to engage some, you know, um, robust conversation about, you know, how can we best take Cuba Street from, from really, you know, how can we make that the jewel in Wellington's crown? Because we want people to visit Wellington, which we will do once, you know, things, you know, and, and that, you know, that enables people to sort of, you know, it just, just lift it up. Because, you know, when I look at the street itself, I don't think it's had any curb and channel work in like thirty-five years. It's, you know, the, the pavements are pretty broken down. And, you know, another friend of mine was saying it, it's still pretty rumpy, you know, can we not make it, you know, a bit better looking? Um, and when you look at what Auckland's done with Fort Street, O'Connell Street, High Street, you know, and initially there's often quite a lot of pushback from businesses saying, take away the car park, take away the customer, it's the end. And then, you know, they see that actually that that's not the case. Um, there's a really interesting Guardian article I probably should forward you all about, you know, the taking away is often five to ten times more powerful than the giving back. So I think it's, you know, as, as this discussion rolls on, it's really important to try and get my fellow business owners to see what they would get back rather than what they would lose. Um, yeah, so that's kind of where I see Cuba Street heading, really. Questions?
Yes, James, thank you very much. Um, uh, the mayor, councillor Rush and I were with some other restaurateurs the other day with a different perspective. I was just curious how your customers get to Floriditas?
That's an excellent question and I thought that I might commission a survey, actually, um, because I don't know, um, conclusively what percentage walk, what percentage drive, how many Uber, how many cycle, how many catch public transport, um, and at what different times of day they do, they do that. Because, you know, obviously at nine thirty on a Monday morning, you could probably park right outside most restaurants on Cuba Street. But then, you know, peak hour on a Friday night or Saturday, Sunday, you're very unlikely to be able to. So it is time dependent about when people can and can't and how they get there.
Okay, well, some data will be great. And I personally do walk there, but, you know, that would be expected. Right. And I'm sure councillor Young does as well. Um, right, other questions? No?
No.
Oh, right. No, hang on, I'm not finished then. So what, um, the car park next to your building, which, what would you like to, what, because that is one of my number one city priorities is to do something better with that. What, what would you ideally like to see happen there?
Um, well, I mean, this sounds like even more self-interest. I mean, if there is a sitter for a green space in Wellington, it's that car park. Because particularly, even if we didn't pedestrianise that part of Cuba Street, even if we just slowed the traffic right down, it's one of the few spaces in Wellington that effectively is not bordered by traffic. Um, and so it's a very safe space. If you had small children, a pet, they could, you know, it's, it's just fantastic space and, um, it's proximate. You can see during Cuba Dupa, I mean, it's almost the rival to the old, um, Civic Square in terms of its importance in Wellington. You could argue as a kind of rallying place, a kind of like semi-town hall. Um, yeah, it would make an amazing green space. Yeah, I deliberately left that out of my article because I felt that would cloud the issue. But, yeah, turn that into a park in a heartbeat.
Wonderful. Deputy Mayor free.
Thank you very much, Stephen. That's been really useful. You talked about the power of taking away and you talked about the power of giving back. So, sorry, James, I, I just wanted to ask you, in terms of your colleagues, your business associates and other people, what do you think their regard is most powerful in terms of giving back?
Um, I think, I think a sense of sort of equality that, um, if the, you know, it's, it's easy for a restaurant or a cafe perhaps to occupy the outdoor, outdoor space and it kind of makes more sense. But if I'm Slow Boat Records or if I'm selling clothes or books, perhaps it doesn't seem quite so obvious as to, as to what I'm getting, you know, and I might be more, um, attached to people driving to my space. Um, so that would be important. Um, I think also facts, presenting them with some data from, you know, other, um, cities in the world, um, that have done this kind of work and, and the uptake in pedestrianisation and the, the increase in throughput of pedestrians who generally spend more money. I think that would go a long way to assuaging their concerns.
Thank you. No, we've been clear. Thank you very much for your time. It was really helpful. Thank you.
No problem.
Right, Reverend Stephen, welcome to you. How are you?
Uh, I'm good, councillors. I just popped in briefly just to, um, support James. Um, look, it's the Chair of Inner City Wellington. Um, you know, we've been sitting in front of you guys banging on for years about the lack of green space and talking about amenity and all those kinds of things for inner city residents. And, um, there's been so much in the press lately and it's around what is possible and San Francisco converting car parks and, um, public bump spaces and all those kinds of things, there are various articles in that, um, series that stuff is continuing to run. Um, we've been delighted in Inner City Wellington with those because it's kind of echoing what we've been saying about the quality, the built environment that the council has the ability to influence, um, for those inner city residences, that we all know there's going to be more of them and, and there's going to be more people. Um, and that needs also reflected in the latest, what is it, green and the green network plan. And so we all know that these things are going to happen, that we're going to have to find more green space. Um, we all know that we're going to come up with, have to come up with cunning and innovative ways to provide the utility that people need within the urban environment that we have. And it just seems that we, to meet, to inner city Wellington, where you have a business owner like James who is willing, um, to front foot, having a, a play, um, having a, a test run at some innovative ways to increase that public space, that, um, we should support that. Um, and I think that, you know, at least it begins the at least it begins the dialogue that we are all going to have to have in the city about how we find those spaces. We're not magicking up a whole bunch of green space in all likelihood. We may be lucky and get given something, you know, somebody might leave us a building space or something for the good of the city. That's happened in other places. But actually, it's going to be partnerships with businesses and with council and exploring some of these ideas that will get us to where we need to get. And so, you know, we can not do it, we cannot have an innovate moment now or we can wait for two or three years and have a go then. And I just encourage you to just work with James and see what, what we can do. Your planning team is fantastic. I'd get in to work it out. I was in that briefing they did to the Combined Residents Association on the draft district plan last night and it was a fantastic briefing. I have full confidence that if the council engage with the expertise that it has with the business owners in lower Cuba, in that part of Cuba Street around Floriditas, that something clever would come up and something innovative that you could sell to Wellingtonians as a trial or a, you know, our best guess at what we might be doing more of in the future, I think that would be all positive. So I just wanted to pop in and say, to encourage you to see how far you can take the conversation, really.
Thank you very much for your clear. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Foon.
Kilda, Stephen, thank you for coming in. A lot of what we've been talking about in regards to understanding that we need more spaces for people. But how, with the inner city neighbourhoods, how do they feel about the, the low, low traffic plans that, that we're wanting to look into? Does that, do you get a sense of how people are or feel about that?
So let's think about this in terms of residential terms. For those who, of us who live in, in a city, our constituents, the low traffic plan primarily, the greatest impact of that on us is Saturdays, is the weekends. Because you can't move easily around in the city in the weekends. Because Monday to Friday, we're not part of that peak in and out flow, in and out of the city from any direction because we're already here. And so that is, so it's a slightly different angle on that. So yes, we would be, again, for us, it's more a question of when we take cars out, when we have shared spaces, when everyone's gone home to the suburbs, we have more space, it's more, you, you, you know, we have greater utility in the urban built environment when that happens. But, and, and the low car thing certainly helps us out immensely on the weekends. Most of the people that I know that actually hold a car in the inner city, they don't use it on the weekend. It's not, I mean, you've got to get all your errands done by about 10 o'clock or you never, it just takes forever. And so most of the time, you know, during the week, we're walking in and out. And if we're running errands, we get it done early or we do it sort of way off peak on the weekend. So yes, of course, we're supportive, but really for us, it's a question about the utility of the spaces that surround us. And so when we're not sharing as much space with cars, you know, that means more space for, you know, walking the dog or going out with the kids or, you know.
Kilda, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not, oh, councillor Paul.
Kilda, Stephen, nice wage video. You said at an, in a City Wellington meeting a while ago that you guys would be more supportive of the significant investment being asked of you if we were actually articulating a vision to you guys. And I wondered if you could just speak to that or the need for something kind of overarching the direction that we're going in.
Well, you mean, other than all the documents that relate to the draft district plan? Yeah, look, one of our, one of our challenges is, is that for inner city residents, a lot of our, a lot of our needs are sort of, it's sort of the inverse of the, the central discussion, you know. So for instance, if we're talking about let's get Wellington moving again, right? Let's get Wellington moving. The, the point of let's get Wellington moving fundamentally is to find the most efficient way to move huge numbers of people in and out of the city on the weekday peaks, right? Well, for us, as I said, how that makes our lives much better in the inner city is can I move during the weekend? Not the inner city, not, not the, you know, the, the morning and evening weekday peaks. Can I move out to the eastern, south, the eastern suburbs or southern suburbs easily in and out of the city regularly on Saturday and on Sunday? Because that's when I'm, you know, that's when inner city residents will want to do those kinds of things. And we get that when you're planning that, those flows, that it's not really, you know, the needs of the inner city residents are not necessarily there. And so when we look at the overarching, our concern with the overarching, the idea of an overarching plan is when we talk about, and it's some of this is being addressed in the draft district plan and I acknowledge that. But when we talk about intensification of dwellings and doubling the numbers of people in the inner city and the CBD, we need to have confidence that the issues that we have, you know, that the deficit that we see now in existing green space for the residential population as it exists now, that that deficit in green space and the deficit that we see in the infrastructure, the underground infrastructure's ability to cope with the residents that we have now, that somehow as this intensification occurs with new development, that somehow not, that it doesn't get worse and in fact we actually catch up. And I suppose that's those related pieces of development, like infrastructure development, open space development, public space development, as all these other things come in that relate to intensification of residential dwelling. It's us understanding and feeling that, that it all ties up somehow. And, and yes, from my briefing yesterday, I did see that, that there are some ties in to, I think it said, that where it's a significant development, that, that it must meet, well, connect with the three rivers and, well, the three waters infrastructure or provide something, I think Liam said in one of his presentations, or provide an alternative. So we're starting to see that, but that is our major concern. Because for us, this is not theory about the intensification, it's reality now, it's happening and it will continue to happen at pace right up until 2024 or whenever this new district plan comes in. And so, you know, that's, that's our concern, Tim, that at the moment, that overarching thing is not there because we're, we're managed by the existing district plan. It didn't actually perceive of the amount of residential development that already exists and is already being approved to continue to go up.
Great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time, Stephen.
Okay, thanks everyone.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Cheers, bye.
Bye.
Aonar, are we able to access staff? Are they going to be here physically or are they going to be online?
They are in the room next door. Yes, no, no, that's a fair enough question. So you can put them on. Oh, they will, they will turn. Yes. Sorry, so I'm just going to reorder the agenda with the, the fossil fuel free central city. So we'll just wait for the officers to come on for questions. Sure, go for it, just sort it. No, no, we haven't adjourned. Sorry, Vida, I think we're just having a tiny break. Okay, okay, start the questions, right. Councillor O'Neill, you're looking, no, you'd.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, yes, Vida.
All right. Kilda, thank you, Madam Chair. So back in May, we were asked to go away and.
Sorry, sorry, Vida, do you want, do you want to?
I think they thought you had because I kind of turned around and I was like, hang on, what's going on?
Right, okay. Sorry, actually, Vida, would you just mind waiting one minute and then I'm sure.
So you've read the report. I think I just want to finish off by saying we know that many successful cities around the world are rebalancing the public realm to be for people. And as we want to attract talent and as the central city population doubles and we densify, we need to make sure that the city is green, vibrant and walkable. Vancouver, there's a good example in some of the material from Vancouver, where over the last 20 years, their population has increased by 75%. In that time, they've also seen a reduction by 20% of cars entering the city and an increase in job growth by 26%. So we can both grow our population, reduce the amount of cars in the central city and create a more prosperous.
Kilda for that. Right, questions councillors? Any? Councillor Foon. You have three and then come back on the list if you want.
Kilda, Vida, I think one of the, the topics that is on our minds and everybody in the organisation is, do, do officers see this as extra workload or does it dovetail into programmes that are already going on? So just how does it fit and, and, and do you view it as another thing or is it is building on what's already happening?
So our recommendation in the paper is that it is incorporated into programmes of work which are already happening. Let's Get Wellington Moving is one of the instrumental and most important pieces of work for moving and changing the way that our city functions in the central city. So making good decisions around mixed transit is really important for moving towards this. And then we've also got the promise and, and of our main ways, but we're looking at working this in with the existing programme of work that we've already got. Yeah, it is an ambitious programme that was like a mystery yet.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Okay, right. Sorry, do you want to, do you want to ask then?
I was just going to let councillor Paul move for a minute and then ask questions, but if that's not how she wants to do it, I'll do it some other way. Not officer advice. Do you want us to take office advice before you move it or after you move it?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Sorry, we just, just resolved this issue and then suddenly, Mayor Foster, do you want to?
I suggest that usually what we do is allow the councillor to introduce it, which I think is what councillor Conde is trying to do. Otherwise, it means the officers are trying to give advice when they haven't heard councillor Paul's rationale.
Sorry, it's just because, it's just because we've had officer advice, sorry. That's fine. Mayor Foster, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm not asking a question about an amendment that I haven't, that hasn't been moved. I'm asking questions about that. To the officers, yeah, yeah, cool. I just, just wanted to ask, just Vida, the interrelationship between this and Let's Get Wellington Moving. And I know we're sort of not, I think we've stepped back from talking about specific streets in the way that the recommendation is. But obviously there'd be very close discussion with Let's Get Wellington Moving in terms of the circulation plans that are necessary, particularly with the Golden Mile proposals on the table.
Yep. So, and that's what the recommendation is recommending that we work with Let's Get Wellington Moving to understand how traffic circulation plans can complement and work within the programme of work. And one of the things that we've pointed out in the papers is particularly around the construction periods that we're going to have to reorganise how our traffic is working in the city. And this might be a really good way of ensuring that it works well both during construction and after construction.
Yeah, so, so the, so the recommendations essentially two is, too effectively is, recommendation two is effectively the primer, the prime recommendation and then recommendation five is, is in a sense within that context. Is that what you're basically saying? Yeah, okay, that's cool. Second one is, you, you highlighted, I think it was Vancouver you mentioned. And obviously we've also had the, the LGWM advice around business viability and activity with, you know, pedestrianised or semi pedestrianised areas. Do we have any other advice from, there's quite a number of bits of advice in the, in the CAGNY report about circulation etcetera, mode share and all that sort of thing, but less about business. What sort of other advice do we have on that?
So there's also an attachment, Gill, who are currently also doing some work for Let's Get Wellington Moving. They have a lot of experience throughout the world, looking at cities. And so they've got a section in that that's about the economy and other cities and examples from other cities. from other cities where they have introduced more low traffic measures and what that's meant for the economy of those people.
That'd be good, okay. And the final one is it-
Some source, sorry. It's source data, so you'll be able to go into the sources.
Cool, cool, cool. Okay, and the final one is just, one of the things that appeals to me is the possibility of, and it kind of follows a little bit from Stephen King's comments, that the ability for us to be able to say, look, we're going to close some streets off possibly quite regularly, possibly even daily, at different times of the day. So we might say, well, look, we want, we want to allow vehicles to circulate at a certain time of day, but other times of the day, we want that to be people place. Have we had any look at our ability to do that? I know that's probably a legislative sort of type thing or regulatory type thing, but-
So here at this stage, we've done the pre-feasibility report, which MR CAGNY did, and that's the first stage of understanding what it is. So that's some of the work that Let's Get Wellington Moving will be-
So that's- So that's something which we could tenably say, well, we'd quite like to be able to do that and just make it a lot easier. Because I know it's a really difficult, expensive thing to keep on closing roads, but if it was an easy thing to do, you might just go and put a barrier up, say, right, job done. We know it's happening at 10 o'clock in the morning.
It isn't easy, apparently.
I know it's not easy at the moment, I'm just asking whether we could seek that flexibility.
It could be something we're locked in, we haven't gone into any detail.
Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Frey. I guess I'm interested, thank you, Vida, I guess I'm interested in the way in which this interrelates with some of the other work that's going on. So for example, congestion pricing. And another example would be Greater Wellington is very keen on having legibility in their bus routes, which means in their mind that, you know, they have two-way bus routes on the same street. So how does this play into and support some of those other things?
That is, so the congestion charging, I can't comment at the moment, that's something that's not possible currently. And you have been talking to national government around it. In terms of working with Greater Wellington, that is why we see Let's Get Wellington Moving as such an essential part of this, as we go through city streets and we make sure that we're prioritizing public transport and active modes. We need to be working together to understand how we make, make all the pieces of the puzzle fit best together. And using traffic circulation plans have worked in other cities to be part of that glue of making the things work together.
I look forward to seeing a bit more detail. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councillor Rush?
Yeah, hi, Vida, sorry, I have to confess that with the other things going on this week, having been able to give this the attention I really would have liked, but what I have seen is really good. The GIL report back in, I think, 2004 talked about the city bypass, so is that one of the options? And are you considering parking, fringe parking in order to facilitate trips into or close to the CBD?
So the MR CAGNY report is a pre-feasibility report, so it's an example of what could work and what they think would work in a lot more detail and modelling and understanding we need to go in at the next stage of work before we get those questions could be answered.
Thanks, I've got some questions just following on from that. I get this is a pre-feasibility, but I am a bit worried about some of the thinking in here. So this discussion about ring roads, about diverting traffic onto some, well, that is one of the suggestions. And one of the examples that's given, which I'm like- hopefully not under councillor Paul's leadership, but, but there is very much from CAGNY about, you know, like, well, we'll use Kenton Cambridge Terrace to put traffic on. You know, my, when I seconded this motion, this was for me about reducing traffic overall. So can I just, is that your understanding too, that that is the idea?
Traffic, the traffic circulation plans are about dividing the city up into cells. So if you're going from one cell to the other, it can be really easy on public transport or walking or cycling, but it makes it more difficult in the car. So at the moment, you can come into town, drive through the town on five different roads, very, very easy, it takes half the time it does compared to walking or cycling through that city. So in the future, what doing a traffic circulation plan will do was make it much easier to walk and cycle between cells and take public transport than it is to drive, which in turn would be about then making it, people choose a different public transport mode before they chose to bring the car into town.
I understand that, what I'm worried about is what happens when you get out of those cells and where you're putting cars, that's what I'm not understanding entirely.
Yeah, I guess the point is that there'll be less cars coming into the central city because it's harder to get around and move through it. So people will be choosing to walk and cycle and take public transport into the city. So you're reducing the overall number of people choosing to drive into the city.
We can only live in hope. And then Let's Get Welling Moving, look, it does seem like there's some really good things happening, but I just get a little bit worried also when it just, it's such a big program, taking so long, is it just going to end up sort of losing some focus if it gets absorbed into that?
Not, no, I think that they're, they're really excited by the idea of this and it works well to complement, as I said, create some of those places that we, connects the work streams and it begins to really talk about how we, how this is implemented, Let's Get Wellington Moving gets implemented and then works in the future.
And just the final question, so 2030 is a deadline that we now have to really work at speed to. So in eight years, what would you say to Wellingtonians about how much of this will be done, that people will be able to see a real difference on the ground in terms of being able to walk and cycle more easily?
Yeah, so we've had an appendancy around the timeline and what we say is, because it's a whole lot of pieces that are coming together to create it. So there's some of the things which will be in place by 2025 and there are other things that will happen in the period between 2025 and 2030, such as the bus electrification, metro of transit construction, this part, and these pieces. So that is definitely the, the view is that these will all help together and this will help connect those projects so that there are less people driving around the city in 2030 and more people walking and cycling. A bike, thinking about that we can still have deliveries, there's still accessible parking and for those that need to drive in the city, so it's not car free, but it's about low traffic and ensuring that the people that need to drive through the city, that they're able to and other people walking and cycling and take public transport.
And sorry, actually, just final question, given we were talking to these restaurateurs and retailers the other day, so what you're saying is that there will be priority given to service vehicles so that people can unload or whatever, because that's their worry, that they won't be able to get in?
Yeah, we need to still have a functioning in working city and that way we will, of course, be encouraging electrification.
Sure, okay, thank you. Any other questions, councillors? No, seems to be a very clear set of reports then, thank you very much. All right, councillor Paul, would you like to move the motion?
All right, this is scary doing it back in real life. Okay. Well, I tuatai kaite mahiki te manu finoa o tiaro, ko teataiau o tira taranaki faunui. Kaite mahinui kia Vida Christella, Tom Pettit, Kent Lundberg, na MR CAGNY, Jenny Wiggle, Nadine Dodge, Moana Maki, o tira Koto. Ema hiana i tenea kopapako, tiaro tato. So firstly, just acknowledging the indigenous people of the land in which our inner city sits and for which we will make decisions on now, ema hiana. Second, just acknowledging the people who have worked on this project, kiora ra Koto. And thank you to the public participants as well, and especially to James and Isabella for all of their work socialising this idea of a people centred in a city. I'm really grateful for the work that has been done and I guess the point of the notice of motion was urgency. And the notice of motion happened on the day of the National School Strike for Climate and has returned during international climate negotiations at COP26. The reason that I brought this motion was because I asked myself, when these young people were marching in the street demanding urgent action on climate change from their leaders, including us, were we doing everything we could possibly do to move the city towards a low carbon future? And I've got to be honest, it's been excruciatingly painful waiting for change to happen in the city. And it does feel like the last two years, we have been in a lull and it does feel that there are many more years of status quo ahead of us. This is not exciting, inspiring or hopeful as a young person living in the city and young people make this city what it is. We've just increased our city's climate target to reduce our emissions by 54% in the next nine years and the government has just committed to a 50% reduction in emissions in the next nine years as well. We are a long, long way from meeting those targets. And I can't help but feel that we are continuing on with business as usual while we hurtle towards catastrophic climate change that I will experience in my lifetime and so will many of your kids and your mukapune as well. It feels that we are going to business case design and consult ourselves to death while the city sits in a state of inertia. Mass rapid transit construction is still six years away and the district plan will take decades to realise its full potential. We can influence and encourage behavioural change right now and show people that a different reality is not only possible, it is something to look forward to. Meanwhile, when transmission gully opens, it is going to mean, when, when it does, it is going to mean more congestion, more car domination, increasing feelings of a lack of safety and less space invisibility for people. Tiaro can and should be true to its name. That is a socially inclusive public space, accessible and enjoyed by people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds. Christchurch is currently designing a traffic circulation plan and Auckland has one at the moment, which is called Access for Everyone. And I don't want this one to be called fossil fuel free CBD and that's why I gave it a name. And the name came about because it was called fossil fuel free CBD and that's obviously a mouthful, no one likes calling it that. And then it was named Purniki for People and then that name got taken away like a week ago. And so, and there was an insistence by officers to keep calling it fossil fuel free CBD. So I thought, no, it needs a name because I'm serious about this work and it will continue. And like Stephen said, this is about providing a holistic vision that isn't solely about green spaces, it's actually also about the public realm and the way that people interact and use that. So for those wondering what the name actually encompasses and for those who may not have read the report yet even, it involves a traffic circulation plan. It means that the central city is no longer seen as a thoroughfare and is interacted with as a lively, inclusive and exciting space for people. The low traffic transition of a number of different streets means primary access is reserved for pedestrians, mobility user access and delivery vehicles, especially those streets, streets which will be unaffected by Let's Get Wellington Moving. And I've added more certainty in my amendments by naming Dixon Street and the extension of the Cuba pedestrian mall as streets that we should look at as a matter of priority. Part of this tiaro tato will also be a parklet guideline, which will show how private car parks can be repurposed to be more people centred. And it will, another one of my amendments is looking at the temporary opening up of streets with low cost interventions to expand space for pedestrians, micro mobility users and those dining and shopping in the area, particularly over summer. And e-bike libraries and those, I think, should really have a focus on transport equity and providing e-bikes for those who will never be able to afford an e-bike, let alone an e-vehicle. So that's pretty much it. And just to explain the name tiaro tato, which I hope will win, but it might not even win, but I thought I'll explain it anyway. Tiaro is obviously the name of, the official name of the inner city suburb, which takes its name from tiaro pa, which was one of the original sites of human habitation here in Wellington and Purniki, Te Wanganui Atara. And tato is obviously an exclusive, an inclusive term, meaning us, we, all of us, to encapsulate the inclusive nature of public spaces and how currently we have an exclusive, unsafe inner city. So that's pretty much it. The other thing that I think is cool about the traffic circulation plan is that it's not necessarily about being car free. And I guess when I moved that notice of motion, I had this focus on car free, not realising that that excludes a large number of people, particularly our disabled community. And the other cool thing about the traffic circulation plan is that we know that over the next few decades, we will be experiencing sustained periods of disruption and uncertainty and construction. And there will obviously be changes of government, changes of councils, and we need to provide some certainty that it's not going to be an awful time and in fact, it's exciting and we can all look forward to the regeneration of the inner city. So looking forward to debate and answering any questions. And yeah, kia ora, thanks everyone for the work on this.
Kia ora, do you want to second? I'll let people ask questions? Okay, sure. Councillor Conde?
Thanks, hopefully Vida's coming back to answer our questions.
Oh, right, yes, sorry, I hope she's still there listening in.
Yes, there you are, hello, Vida. I just wanted to understand, so I'm looking at the second part of number seven there about opening up Cuba Street by limiting private vehicle access for consideration in the next LTP. And I want to understand what would be involved in preparing a plan to do that, to go into the LTP? What's the, what would the resource be? Do you have the resource to do that?
So we're comfortable with the amendment, assuming that it is, if in the LTP process you decide to start that as a project, then that, of course, we will work on it. We do not have resources currently to do a whole lot of pre-work around that. We can do some initial estimates, but it will be, just as we normally do for LTP projects, a very, very high level sketch, but it won't be anything, not a design sketch, just a sketch of what it will cost and the time we will need.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was, you know, the number eight about supporting Cuba Street, which I think comes back to the query we've had from James Peterson about whether we can close that bit of Cuba Street. What's the, how could we kind of most easily trial closing that little bit of Cuba Street as per that request?
Vida, can I get the amendments up? I can't actually, so.
Vida, I'll email it to you, it's just on a different device than the Zoom.
Okay. So just repeat that, Jenny, in terms of the-
So the, what's on our screen is number eight, where it says, support Cuba Street businesses this summer to explore possible people centric layouts via formal research and temporary trials, such as an open street events and trial parking arrangements. And I was just wondering, like, how can we most easily do that? What would that look like in practice? If I vote for this, what is that going to look like? What are you actually going to do?
We of course already have Chiba Dupa, where we close this street each year or the festival of Chiba Dupa. We are also, the Swan and Garrett Lane Construction Project is looking to go ahead in the new year, if we can agree with contractors around that process. So there are already a couple of things in play that could be, could be built on to implement that and how that could happen. We don't have resources to do it as a huge, big separate event, but if we work together with some of the existing things that are already happening in that area, we could do temporary trials. And then there's the parklets as well.
Kia ora. So I'm fine with everything, it's just number six that I want to ask a question about and I love this name, I think it's beautiful. My, my concern is that I'm worried that people are going to get confused because we've got a few different things happening in the CBD. And so I'm actually still a little confused, I'm not really sure what it is that we're naming. I think because there's so many different kopapa going on, I want to understand what that mahi is and I guess it would be good to hear from staff, what is it that we are naming and, you know, what do we expect to happen with that mahi? Because obviously we've got Purniki Promise, in fact, I kind of like this name, I think this name could be confused with Purniki Promise, maybe it should become the name for Purniki Promise? It's beautiful, but I'm worried if we have Purniki Promise and Tiaro Tato as Maori, I'm going to go, oh, those things sound really similar, like, and the kopapa's really similar. So maybe, I mean, that might be something, Tam, you might want to do something with. But I do want to understand what it is that we're naming, if the staff can help with that. Sure.
No, 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 you go first and then Tam can chime in.
Yeah, so it is probably more a political question than an officer question. At the moment, this is, there is a project around this, it's a whole lot of pieces of work, which we're looking at how we can work together with.
So what are the bits, so we've got, these are all bits of work that are happening, like the Purniki Promise, Let's Get Wellington Moving, what else is there? That's basically, isn't it?
City streets, there's- MIT, the Green Network, Golden Mile, there is an attachment. Bike neck group plan, some of our transitional projects and our Bill Backfield-
So if we created something called Tiaro Tato, would someone be able to do mahi around that? Like, would there be, would they have to create another role or what? Would you have capacity? I'm just trying to make sure we don't create something that, that-
We're currently working on a whole lot of projects, this in itself isn't a project at the moment.
Do you want to just chime in now?
Do you want to just chime in now? Just because, just rather than waiting right to the end of the debate on Project List?
The thing that is confusing is that it had a name. It had a name which was Purniki for People. It had consultants commissioned to work on the project. It had a project governance group and a project steering group. So that's why. So, yeah, yeah. And now it's complete. So what I'm saying is they reverted back to, so they're saying this is how it can be done and it can be absorbed into different parts. But what I guess I'm arguing in this amendment is that, no, it should remain a discreet project that overarches things that don't fall within the remit of other projects and that it should have a name.
So I guess my, where all my challenges, whether Tiaro Tato encapsulates, because it's quite specific, the mahi that you're talking about and whether...
Oh, and the other thing, sorry, is that access for everyone, which I said in my introduction speech, has a name and it's access for everyone. And that's Auckland's traffic circulation plan. And then this is saying that if we have a traffic circulation plan, I don't want it to keep being called fossil fuel free CBD. And that Tiaro Tato could be a name for looking at that.
Okay, so look, we prob, so maybe just that's for now and then maybe we can just keep...
I guess my question is, I wonder if the name is going to make people think about the fact that this is about traffic and trying to reduce it. So that might be a...
Yeah, this is debate.
I think, yeah, that's, so I just, I just wanted to give a bit of space. Right, councillor Calvert, then councillor Fitzsimons. Oh, and then the mayor.
Thank you. Are you taking...
Oh, sorry. So these were just, sorry, were there any questions on the meaning of the amendments?
About amendment number nine.
Yes, yes, you go first.
Support hospitality. So Vida, are you, are you across the work that's currently happening with hospitality Wellington and hospitality businesses with council officers about the work they're doing in this space already? So how does this, you know, is this just putting it down that it's actually happening or is this some other work intended?
This complements it. The work that's already happening where we're looking to create or allow hospitality to come much further onto the streets and be supportive and making that happen. Parklets in themselves are about the using parking spaces as places for cafes to have serving or other things, which is a little bit different, but yes, it is all connected.
Right, thank you. Settle. Okay, councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, just a quick question around this whole naming. So you've sort of said that, Vida, it doesn't sort of, the officer advice is it doesn't need a name because it's basically work that's going on through other projects. Just in terms of the name of the Purniki Promise, there would be, I assume, no issue in renaming that to this, which is what councillor Day mentioned before. I'm just wanting officer advice on that kind of point because it's a beautiful name. What...
I'm just wondering if this should be something that can be taken offline. I'm actually not sure that we're going to get very far with it.
I just wanted to know if we could change that today or not.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just think this is starting to get into, I think you really just need to have a meeting and figure out what it's going to be called rather than having a debate across the table.
Okay, so you're banning the question.
Yeah, I think it's a bit confusing because just remember, Purniki Promise has got some meaning attached to it now. People understand it.
But hang on, you guys are all answering the question. My question is to an officer. And that might be the answer, but I want to get the answer from the officer who have given advice on this particular name, which is not consistent with it and I'm trying to find a way through it. So I think I'm perfectly entitled to have my question answered by the officers.
Yes, thanks councillor. I'm happy to answer that, madam chair. But I would concur with the advice of some of the councils, actually councillor Times. It's a case of multi-agency approach to Purniki Promise and to change that name and alter it in any way would require quite a bit of stakeholder management. And also, like to an earlier point, it is projected out there to the community and currently with a number of work streams servicing the community as the Purniki Promise. So the recommendation wouldn't be that that name change occur at this stage.
Thank you.
Much. Thank you. Mayor Foster?
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for covering off the Purniki Promise because I was concerned about that. It's sort of trying to rename something. We've actually just launched websites and they've got a lot of partners involved. And look, my question is, I've just literally signed off today in the recommendation for a press release around working to support the hospitality sector, which includes exactly the things which are in recommendation four. So I just like, it just, we don't normally take amendments to tell us something which we're already doing. The intent is great because we're already doing it, but, and if I might say, the package, it says the package includes free short term pavement leases, special licence fees, held a residual council events, potentially opening outdoor dining areas such as car parks, wide footpaths, et cetera. So it's exactly those kind of things. So I guess it's partly a question of you, Vida and Liam, but also I guess a question of our DM services advisors, whether that's the right thing to do in terms of a, an amendment to tell us something we're already doing.
Through you, madam chair, and thanks, mayor, for your question. I mean, that media release and the work we've been doing, councillor Calvert released, did some, an earlier work during the last lockdown, actually pulling the hospital industry together. And since that, it snowballed into the initiatives that your office have just signed off today, I believe, and has gone live. So councillor Paul wasn't aware of that at the time. It's just serendipity that it's kind of connected together on the day. I will defer to DM services, whether they believe that's, that's an issue. And I don't believe so personally, but yeah, I think it's just a matter of circumstances.
Okay, so Heidi will respond. Yep.
I guess I'd be very happy noting that we're already doing it.
Yep, through you, madam chair. It's not a reason to not accept an amendment as per our standing orders. So it could be put as an amendment. Whether it's strictly necessary is for the committee to decide.
Have you got any other questions about the meaning of the amendments or the motion? I think we can deal with some of this in debate. Yep. Anything else, Mayor Foster? Sorry? No, no, no. Oh, lovely. Right, any other questions just about the meaning? Deputy Mayor Frey.
I guess for me, I'd like some officer advice about the naming again. I think actually the officer advice was it wasn't entirely appropriate to name it as a separate project. We've heard, of course, from councillor Paul, but did, was there a definitive answer on that? Yeah, no.
Okay, well, I think, I think it's already, I think it's already been, yeah.
I still feel...
Okay, so I think we will have a discussion through the debate. So councillor Foon, would you like to speak now or would you like to reserve your right? Right, councillor Conde.
I just want to thank everyone who's been involved in this work. It's a really exciting piece of work. It's really great to see it come to fruition. I think it's, you know, it's a piece of mahi that's had its moment. It's done and I think these recommendations are great that it's going to continue along in other pieces of work. But I won't be supporting six because I don't think this is actually a project anymore. I don't think it needs a name. I think this mahi is now finished and is going to be picked up in a number of other ways. So I think to name it would be inappropriate. I'm open to eight because I think that's something that we can look at with officers. Nine, we're already doing. I'm a little on the fence about seven because I think we just need to be really clear that this does not create any expectation that officers will do any significant work on preparing a permanent plan for Cuba Street because that is not budgeted for it and they do not have the resources to do it. On that basis, I could probably support seven, eight and nine. And just really excited to see this work coming through the traffic circulation plan. And I can assure you that on GRG, we will keep an eye on this mahi as it progresses through Let's Get Wellington Moving. I see the mayor nodding. You know, the traffic circulation plan is going to be a really important piece of work so we can keep our eye on it.
Thank you. Councillor Foon, you wish to speak now?
Yeah, kia ora. I'd just like to address the name now. I think we should have the name because, A, it is beautiful, but A, I don't think the work stops here. This is just the beginning and this gives us an opportunity to keep building on it. So that's, yeah, that's where I'm landing on that. But just, yeah, thank you councillor Paul for enabling me to second this. And big thank you to the officers and also for bringing the notice of motion. Who would have actually thought that a fossil fuel free would turn out to be all about hetangata, hetangata, hetangata or the people? And actually, that's what's come back to us and it's about taking back that public space to create more space for people. And actually, sorry, I'm just going to speak to the whole thing now. Is that all good? Yeah, yeah, good, good. So where are we at now? Wellington has got a really strong X factor as we've heard from James who spoke, you know, it is walkable and that condensed city that we walk around means we have a bump factor. The bump factor means that we have a hive of creativity and innovation and we should build on this. And where are we going? So we know we've got some really big blocks out there, our district plan, our cycleways network plan and Let's Get Wally Moving. And to me, what this provides is, is the glue or the jam, the stuff that actually brings it all together and makes it sweet. I think I'm on the treats. I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the treats. Yeah. And as many of these recommendations are about providing space and that space allows the safe, creative innovation that we've just been talking about, more X factor for Wellington. But we actually must recognise that our workforce is changing and that over fifty percent of Wellington's population is under thirty-five and they have different needs. And this is, this is the kind of innovation that they want to see. They want to be able to walk, cycle and have access to more green spaces. And as we can see, we're not alone. We've got examples and actually I had the benefit earlier this year of going to a workshop about Barcelona and low traffic neighbourhoods and how they're actually enabling that. And it was really amazing to see how they designed it, how it was working, speed was ten K so you could go in. But traffic is just not designed to go through. And we've already got exciting examples coming from around the country as well. It's just, it just makes so much sense alongside the construction that this would work in with that. But actually, and then just back to the place for people, what Wellington looks like to me now is it looks constrained. I've got the vision that, that James talked about. People are jammed at pedestrian crossings, even coming down Lampden Key, it was pretty, you know, crammed for a lunchtime on a Wednesday. And I can't stop looking at all the space that, that is, that could be for people. And that is, sorry, the space that cars are parked in. And a place that's good for people is good for business. So what the city needs to look like to me is, is what this is bringing is it's actually enabling a freedom. It's enabling a Cuba Dupa vibe throughout more of the city more regularly. And it's about making it a place you want to be to increase the bump factor, enable the creativity and innovation, which is our X factor. And this in turn attracts people who want to live and work in Wellington and enable it to be thriving. So thank you councillor Paul.
Kia ora. Councillor Day, then councillor Matthews.
Kia ora, Koto. I want to start by thanking councillor Paul for putting this mahi on the table. It is really exciting to see it coming back to us and to hear how some of the connections have been made through this mahi and just talking to officers before and being told that, you know, like the traffic circulation plans hadn't really been thought about until this came on the table. So awesome. And really cool to see some, some concrete changes and things being looked at in different ways. So yeah, really excited to have the paper come back and to support these recommendations and the amendments, except with regards to amendment six. And I really love the name. As I said, it's beautiful and I think it's a, it's a really special name and it's got a lot of meaning within it. I guess the concern I have around it is that when people hear that name, they won't immediately think, oh, that's the fossil fuel free central city ko'apapa. And I guess that's probably where my concern is. It's bigger than that. And it is, as I say, it's a really special name and I'm hoping that it can come through with something which maybe is a little bit bigger than that focus. And I know that this is all about people, but unfortunately that, that, that name doesn't necessarily bring out that, that approach of what that is trying to achieve. And I really, yeah, I'd really like to be able to support it, but I think also when it goes together with the officer advice saying it isn't a particular concrete project, it's come out of some work that's been done to respond to that. And I agree that we mustn't forget that and that we need to carry that in through all our other projects. And I hope that we can find a way to express that. But I just, I don't think we've quite landed on it there and I hope that we can because I think, I think there's some really important mahi that's been done and we don't want to lose that, but I'm not sure that we've quite, quite got it right yet. So let's keep trying and see where we can get to. But yeah, otherwise really impressed with, with the mahi and where it's gone. So kia ora.
Kia ora, Koto. Very briefly, I just want to touch on the accessibility issues, which I know councillor Paul is very passionate about and many of us are around the table and that it sort of hasn't come through quite as strongly as I think as councillor Paul would have liked and I would have liked. But I do think that we can do that through when we get to more detailed design work and really, you know, I want that map and that audit for disabled people to know that they are not further away from the things that they need to do. If they, you know, they do require to be dropped off in a car or, you know, drive a car themselves. So that is something I think that we, you know, I just want to emphasise it in debate, doesn't need to be an amendment, but and in fact there'd be a law making us do this soon, which, woo-hoo. So I guess I just want to, we've talked a lot about young people and I, as someone who suffers maybe from age dysmorphic disorder myself and think that I am a young person when I'm about to turn fifty next year, that I, you know, I share actually councillor Paul's frustration and, you know, things take so long. I still, you know, make jokes that I'm on like normal time, not local government time. And but I also, you know, I guess, and I share that vision that you have, Tam, for the future of the city. And that's why I signed your notice of motion and while I'll continue, I'll support most of these amendments or some of them. But I guess also, you know, to continue to work as a, as a team to deliver that. And I want to acknowledge actually on point nine, I'm going to shock you all and acknowledge councillor Calvert for her work that she's put into supporting the hospitality sector and the mayor's office. And so, so, you know, I realise that this is a coming together, that you're, you're sort of pushing, you know, and the impatience is a really important part of that and I want to acknowledge your leadership. But we want to continue to, to work with you to kind of make that vision, you know. And some of us boring middle aged people also want to walk around the streets and, you know, go in parks and it's not just for the groovy young people. And I just said groovy. So, yes, I should stop talking now before I say any more stupid words.
That was lovely. Now councillors, can I just check? We've got three more speakers. Is there anyone else that wants to talk? Do you want a break soon or do you want to just finish this debate? How do you want to get through? Okay. All right, cool. Councillor Calvert, then councillor Young.
Well, I just have to bring everyone back to reality, down to earth. Somebody has to do it. Somebody, look, I know councillor Paul and I have been aligned on a few things in recent times, but this is probably not one of them. And, and look, I appreciate the sentiments that the, of the notice of motion and this paper that we've got in front of us and even having cost a hundred and twenty-five K to get us to the stage. I would love our CBD not to be a thoroughfare, but basically until we deal with an inner city bypass, it's not going to happen. And, and we, and that's the elephant in the room that we need to deal with. That's why we've got five different routes through the city because people get clogged up at the terrace tunnel. So, but no one's wanting to deal with that issue. So this report, a hundred and twenty-five K, is really just telling us pretty much the stuff that we already know. It's just putting it into a report. And all it's saying is, well, there's some stuff under Let's Get Wally Moving and we could come up with some parklet guidelines and bike libraries. And basically the proposal of a fossil free central city by 2025 is not achievable. Well, I'll tell you what, I could have written that report for five K and still made quite a bit of profit. You're on. So I really just felt this report was really just cherry picking from various projects that we've already got underway and which we're talking about how all these pieces of work are already being done. And even this piece is not even pulling them together into a cohesive suite. You know, we've got Let's Get Wally Moving, we've got stuff happening in Purniki Promise. And, you know, we're already on that journey going towards a low carbon economy. So I'm just really surprised why this is even happening when we've got all this other work underway and why we can't actually stick to the plan that we said that we were going to do. We've had a big LTP. We've said we've got all these priorities, six priorities, and we're putting our resources into here, here, here. we're putting our resources into here, here, here. But, but I'm just sort of thinking that this is just sort of trying to push the resources off to a slightly different way. And I have just have to say, we've got another, another plan coming up here. And with the continuing impacts of COVID, people are exhausted, our staff are exhausted, our central city businesses are exhausted, people in our city are exhausted. And council's ad hoc approach to some of this stuff is not helping. And our people are exhausted from hearing one big idea to the next, while basically the city crumbles under very heavy set of plans, but lack of action on the big stuff. Now, if I thought that the council had 125K sloshing around to work on a notice of motion, I would have thought that we could have done much more with that money and some other things. What about actually fixing Courtney Place or putting it extra into Courtney Place? We've still got that issue that we haven't dealt with properly. And yet we're moving into, on to another area. And, you know, we keep designing our city based, we start from the transport aspect, we're not starting from the people. You know, what do we want to see in our CBD? It's not only an inner city suburb, but it's actually the engine room for our whole region. So we've got to remember that. So, you know, in our city, we do want to see housing, we want to see businesses, we want to see recreation, but we've got to work collaboratively together and plan it well and plan it cohesively. And this to me is just like an omnibus of things that are happening in various other projects. So give it a name, but what difference will that make? It doesn't have a programme around it. And, and I'm just feeling that we're spending our money, our resources on rework, duplicating effort and maybe stuff that's not actually the smartest way we could spend the money to make the difference because we actually all want to end up in the same place. And we do have a lot of tools and skills and ability within our organisation. And we spend 125K on external consultants to tell us what we already know. Look, I, councillor Paul, I appreciate your passion and I'm wanting to make things better. However, I need, I think we need to, there's a better way of going about it and not just selecting one or two parts without thinking of the whole and where our highest priorities are. Our, our plans for our city need to start with people and not the roads. And what I've been hearing through this is all about transportation. So we need to start with people and that's not what this is delivering. So look, for the sake, I'm going to disagree with officers' recommendations, but I can't, I'm not really going to, I'm not going to support all the others. Thank you.
Kia ora, councillor Young.
Okay, so I've said it before, Helmut Schmidt's great quotation, people who have visions should go and see a doctor. I think the council needs to focus on one thing at a time and just get something done. We have so many reports, so much officer time dedicated to doing the reports and consultants, investigating councillors' bright ideas with all these strategies floating in the ether. So we need to have a coherent overarching policy with a list of priorities, a to do list for the city. And we need to work with local businesses and the local residents in the streets that are directly affected, who, several of whom have emailed me. $125,000 for consultants for, as councillor Calvert said, basically the blind and the obvious. You know, we could have put that out to tender, we've offered some discounted rates already. I'm sick of comparisons with other cities. You know, cities that have, they have ring roads, they have great public transport, we do not. Our public transport is not as good as it used to be. They have mass rapid transit, they're probably flat, they've got great weather for dining outside, all those things. We have to recognise this is Wellington. But we also, we're actually not going, I mean, let's get Wellington moving is a joke because nothing is moving. We get nothing done here, but we do lots of speeches like I'm doing right now. And, and wasting rapers money. So it's time to stop this kind of bitty muddled policy work. Central Wellington business has to be involved with any decisions we make. We can't just come up with these ad hoc bright ideas. People have had enough, as councillor Calvert said, people are exhausted. This is costly virtue signalling. And it's great for the consultants, but it's terrible for Wellingtonians because we're just waving ideas in front of them that are never going to happen. So I'll be voting against everything except number one.
Thank you very much. Liz Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine is a question actually. Could somebody send me the actual recommendation? Because I only have five points and I've heard you all talking about one.
Sent to you apparently?
Seven and eight.
Yeah, do you just want to have another look at your email? When did you send it? What time?
I just, I just looked five minutes ago when you were referring to seven and eight and I don't have an email.
From Haiti to your councillor address?
Yep, it was sent at 3.19. Thank you.
All right, lovely. All right, well absorb and then you can.
It would have been helpful to have had it before the discussion started though, then I would know it more clearly what you were talking about.
Councillor Paul says it was sent yesterday, so I'm not sure which email address is. Right, you can go back on the list once you've had a chance to absorb. Councillor Rush then councillor O'Neill.
Well, I was going to make it short, but if Liz would like me to give the long version. I'll be very grateful.
Give it the long version, give it the long version.
There's a number of contradictions, but first of all, I'm thrilled that I'm wearing my fabulous shirt today because I think this is a really fabulous report. It is aspirational. One of the things I found very frustrating, one of the reasons why I was prepared to sign up to this is not because I for a minute believe we can do without fossil fuels in the near future, but what I did think was that there was no one actually in our shop that was really thinking about the future and it was all being tied up, let's get Wellington moving, we just had no control over that. So, I mean, I was quite pleased to, to see that. And I do, I do take my hat off to councillor Paul and the officers for reining in that radical city designer, Sir Robert Jones, whose advice was actually to shut down the lower half of Lampden Key. But, but Sir Robert's made a big contribution. I know he's following this with interest, so shout out to him as well. But, I mean, I think it's, it's a valuable piece of work, it's a starting point. I do like the comparisons, I will go over them rigorously. I've been to several of those places, I know that there are differences, but there are things that we can learn, so well done.
Great, such positivity. Councillor O'Neill. All right. All right, there has been a lot. Councillor O'Neill.
Firstly, I just wanted to start off by thanking councillor Paul and councillor Foon and I know councillor Panna as well, you've had a really big interest in this. I think it is a really awesome opportunity that we've got in front of us today. This is about reimagining the central city and an awesome notice of motion to prioritise us to all get our butts moving again. This is, as other councillors mentioned, there is ongoing continuous impact for, from the COVID crisis and we've received many reports around city safety. But actually what those reports have shown is that more pedestrianisation makes our streets safer for people. It was one of the key recommendations in the Courtney Place report. This is a vision and a vision for the central city and although Nicola Young, you might not like visions, but it is. But, but vision and aspiration is something that Wellington City Council has long been criticised for this triennium, so I really do appreciate the initiative, even if it does come in a notice of motion, I think it is a very effective way to make change. It's, I believe, it's, yes, it's really, really good to plan and pedestrianisation for our city and it's just as well that this is coming to the planning committee and coming from a planner, a planner and training herself. Vida says this is also going to be a part of a whole network, so I've no doubts that that won't be included in there. And I find the irony in other councillors that say we waste time consistently and complain we aren't going to do anything, but consistently vote against everything to my other colleagues down the other end of the table. Because, you know, quite frankly, we've had let's get Wellington moving come to our table, we're so excited to get the proposals up and ready, this is a similar one, and then you'd vote against it. And then we look around and we're like, oh my God, we haven't done anything. I just find it is quite satirical sometimes. In the last 12 months, two thirds of Wellingtonians have said that they want to densify and build up before we go out. And 92% have prioritised Wellington becoming a zero carbon city by 2050. We have an excellent opportunity in front of us and a great attitude from Wellingtonians telling us to push forward here on proposals that are in front of us. So with that, I will be voting for all of the recommendations. I think it's really important that Tiaro Tato is, is a name and, and a signal and something we can say, a project that we can reference to in the ground when people ask whatever happened to that. And I think that's really important as well. So kia ora.
Kia ora. And I'll speak now and I'd again like to acknowledge councillor Paul for her leadership. And I just was reflecting, it was 1997 when we tried to sit down with transit, transit, and they couldn't understand what we were going on about. And now fast forward a very long time, a very long time, now we are able to have that conversation. So that is a good thing. The history has been difficult. In fact councillor Paul, in modern times, you're now the third generation that has been fighting for some of this stuff. So it has taken a long time. It's not just local government's fault, councillor Matthews. There was a fierce resistance in many quarters to, to some of these very progressive ideas. So it is good. I just, I have been inspired by your positive speeches. I just want to just take a slightly different tack and to say that I was quite inspired by John Bishop, not usually a commentator I would agree with. Now, Mr Bishop's language was possibly a bit inflammatory, but he said last week, this government is a government of wimps. And he said, if you want to reduce climate change, tell people that they're going to have to drive less, walk more, cycle more, catch the bus more. And in fact, maybe we just haven't done that and we need to do it now to show that courage to say that things are going to change, but it will be better. Councillor Paul, can I just make a few suggestions? I start to have heart palpitations when you talk about traffic circulation, very traffic engineer language. I think we want to be talking about people and how they use space and, you know, back to Mr Bishop, I do want to see a very big reduction of cars in our central city and they shouldn't just be rerouted to the outer parts. Children live here, elderly people here, people, you know, like, so this whole thing about sticking traffic on Cambridge Terrace did not fill me with joy. So let's just hope that we can hold decision makers to account that it needs to be an overall reduction of traffic, not of children, I love children. Yeah, actually it's becoming a bit unfashionable. So look, I am inspired by this. We are going to make progress and I think there's so, so many good bits of pieces of work on the ground. So finally, we have, you know, we've won the battle, just got to win the war now in a pacifist kind of way. Councillor Paul, can I just make a pragmatic suggestion to you? You are free of course always to ignore my advice, but number six to me does just seem a bit tricky. I think it actually needs a conversation with a number of people, just to talk about how the projects will be organised and what it should be named. I think it's just a bit tricky to do that now. So you might, you might want to think about just withdrawing it for now and figuring it out, or you could go to the vote, whatever you want to do. But this might be a good idea because I think it gets quite confusing. There are large numbers of pieces of work with branding attached to them, stories, stakeholders, and I think it's just getting a bit messy now to figure out what's what. So I think sometimes just it's easier to have a meeting. But well done, it is history in the making and I can't wait to tell my children that they will not have to take up the challenge to do this work hopefully, because it will be done in the next 10 years. Deputy Mayor Free.
But of course, I own a, I thank you, but everybody, every generation will have its challenges, so your children will have their own challenges, no doubt. Look, I think that this is exciting and I do think actually the report is useful. We always talk about a vision, but it's, for me, it has to be something that you can actually visualise. So the pictures are really helpful, the case studies are really, really helpful and it's quite useful to reflect that this has been done before. So Copenhagen, health benefits, fewer sick days, branding, tourism, property values, Vienna, more businesses starting up, exciting. Barcelona, we all love Barcelona. You know, so these places have done this kind of stuff and I reckon, you know, for myself, it gives me confidence. And, you know, as James said when he submitted this morning, what can we do to give the good part back to the businesses? And one of the things he said was data. Data and examples really help. So I think it's good. I don't know where we're going quite with it, but that's life. I won't be supporting the name. I love the name. It's actually a name I can say, like so many Maori names I struggle with. I love it, Tiaro Tato, it's amazing. But I think I'm just not confident that we've done the homework on it and maybe it's even for a better and bigger project. I think we might even be selling short to have such a beautiful name, tagged with this work which is going to be incorporated and feeding into a lot of other projects. So that's probably the only one I won't support. But thank you councillor Paul, great work. You went out on a limb to get it done and I think it's, it's, it's good. It is valuable, it is helpful. And I think there is a lesson there about, you know, those of us who want to make progress and grizzle about, you know, we're not making fast enough progress, perhaps do need to think about supporting stuff. Yeah, yeah.
Kia ora. Any other speakers? Right, councillor Paul, if you need to.
If I need to.
Oh, sorry, apologies. Liz Kelly, did you want to, did you want to come back on the speaking list?
No, no, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Wolf, you were all good? Okay. Right, councillor Paul.
Yeah, cool. So, all right. I would say, so firstly councillor Conde, I would disagree with you respectfully that the project does not stop here. There is no plan for Cuba Street. I think there should be a plan for Cuba Street. And there are many other streets which won't be encompassed by let's get Wellington moving that I think that we should look at. And I believe that unless there is a mandate there for the officers to go and look at that, maybe not this triennium, perhaps next triennium, but it's just not going to happen and we'll just stay in the current state waiting for everything else to happen while those streets remain the same. So no, I reject that the project stops here unless everyone doesn't vote for it, then it does end here. Sorry, that'd be awkward. Yeah, I guess the name one is tricky. The name, the naming is tricky. I guess for me it was quite confusing, like I said at the beginning, that it had a name and then the name got dumped and the reason was that there were too many things with Purniki in it. So I went away and worked really hard to find another name, which was Tiaro Tato. And I think it's beautiful too. And I would also say that we weren't, we aren't often consulted on the names of things. And so I thought it would be quite cool for us to be able to name something collectively. But, but I guess it's just, you know, I don't want this, this, I mean Auckland's traffic circulation plan, even if at a bare minimum that was what Tiaro Tato was, it's called Access for Everyone. And that was what I was thinking about was like, I was thinking about the word inclusion, I was thinking about access, I was thinking how can we use tareo maori in this? How can we celebrate that inclusive nature of the project? And Access for Everyone isn't just a transport circulation plan. It has eight different parts to it. I know because the designer sat me down and showed me all the different parts that encompass safety and construction disruption and accessibility for disabled people and transport. Like it was a holistic plan and like, and it's just, what if it's just called fossil fuel free central city? Like that's boring as. And like this was an attempt to celebrate tareo maori, to name it holistically and to give it that vision. But I understand if it loses, but I would be really disappointed if it was because I did work with a lot of people to try and find this name. And I was up one night till like 2am thinking of names. I thought Tiaro Tomorrow, I thought, I thought inclusive in a city, I thought about so many different names because I felt it needed a strong mana name to drive forward. What I'm trying to say to people, which is that there are lots of streets in our inner city that will not be impacted by city streets, let's get Wellington moving, that will not be impacted by Purniki Promise. Purniki Promise is merely going to pedestrianise Dixon Street. And the city streets, and there are many streets that will be left out and I don't accept that they should stay the way that they are because the people on those streets, the businesses and the hospitality places on those streets want it to change. And that's why James wrote that article this week. So I'm, so the name, I would love it if people would reconsider and, you know, this is just agreeing to the name itself, it could encompass something more. It could, you know, we can have that conversation, but I just think it would be pretty disappointed. I would be disappointed if we said no to this now because otherwise it's going to be called fossil fuel free CBD. Like how ugly is that? It's super ugly. Anyway, yeah, so, yeah. Anyway, yeah, councillor Matthews, you were right, accessibility was not as good as it could have been. And I really did say in those beginning meetings that the top priorities were accessibility and mode shift and climate change. Those were the big priorities of this plan. And I think if more detail is able to go into it, that it will encompass those things. And like, that shows that the work will continue. So I don't know why some people are saying that the project stops here, it doesn't stop here, it will keep going. Councillor Calvert, you said in your speech, we want to end up in the same place. I don't want to be in the same place. The same place is boring. People are moving to Auckland because, because they don't want to live here. And, and even Mittens is gone today, you know? And it's just like, I don't want to stay in the same place, we need to change. Councillor Rush, thank you. Thank you for your great words. Shout out to you. Love that, love that totok all that's fought. Just on the outdoor dining stuff, I raised that issue with officers a while ago. Just on the outdoor dining stuff, I raised that issue with officers a while ago. I'm not saying I'm the first at all. I know, yeah, you did as well. Rebecca's raised it first. And then I brought it up in my meeting with officers, asking if that would be something we could explore as part of this because I thought it was the opportunity to bring up the outdoor dining stuff. And I was okay with the amendments as they were in the report. But then when I talked to James and Isabella, they suggested some wording that might be to the effect of what they were looking for. So that's great that that's already happening. That's awesome, that's fine. So if that's merely noting, that's all good. To be honest, I wasn't super concerned about that because I know the low traffic interventions will support that kind of work anyway. So, kia akua te tikanga on that one. Councillor O'Neill, thank you for your koorero. It just feels so good to know that someone has the same sense of urgency around the table. And councillor Panet, traffic circulation plans, if you looked at the great report, they, although they're about private vehicles, we did see some really good promising results there about the reduction of private vehicle usage and the uptake of mode shift and people taking public transport or cycling more in all these other cities. So, look, don't stress, it's all good, all right? It's all good. So, yeah, thanks everyone for the debate. And, yeah, I would love, I would love for your support. I would be really disappointed if six doesn't get through because I think it's just a bit premature. Like I think it's kind of cutting it off before it could really live its full potential. And the Cuba Street stuff, I think that's really important as well because I think we need to give an indication to the offices now that we're serious about Cuba Street continuing to be extending that pedestrian more. And that's not going to come about any time soon because, because we've got an election next year. And then we've got, what, six months of induction and people want to look at that now. So, yeah, I'm interested to see how the vote will go. But, yeah, kia ora everyone and thanks.
Right, how would people like to vote? Can we do one to five on a, no, one on its own? Two to, two to five together or do you want to take everything separately? Two to five together? Okay, right, so can we vote on one, please? It is acceptable to refuse information, by the way. And if you don't like it. I have, I have done. Councillor O'Neill? Right, that's 14 in favour, excellent. Okay, two to five, two to five. Good. Thank you. Now, six, seven, eight and nine, do you want to take those separately or six separately? All right, thank you. And so these will all be divisions? Yeah, thank you. Hope, but in a non divisive way.
Back after the break, I'm just now going to invite Mr. Hodgets to do a very short introduction of our final paper for today. And sorry, just I've had some feedback from people on Zoom. I'm just gonna just make sure I explain everything so they know what's going on because it was just obviously a bit difficult to follow, given we're in two lots of different kinds of places.
You want to go to ten, Koto, Madam Chair, are we ready to go?
Yes, we are, thank you.
Thank you, councillors and members of the community watching. So, yes, very short introduction. We'll go over a little bit of background and just explain what we're asking of you today. So we all know the history, we don't need to go into that detail, but we thought the three key points to raise here would be, of course, Love the Bay process in 2017. You know, we need to be faithful with that and the community, that was what kicked this off. In 2019, of course, the High Court found in favour of council's position regarding the evidence we presented on safety. And acknowledged the community safety concerns in that regard. And we, you know, through that decision, it was agreed certainly by the court that those those issues need to be remedied. And just recently, as of last week, of course, we now have an MRT route that's been announced with all the options, including an Island Bay route. And so that's the context of this report. Today, we're asking to you to decide on two options. Obviously, the safety improvement option is integrated with the resale that was has been discussed with you already, which focuses on resolving those safety issues that have been raised, in particular, the driveway intersections. The other one, of course, is the implementing the long-term improvements, that $14 million amount that was agreed in the last LTP. So it needs to be made, these two decisions in the context of the previous decisions that have happened, of course, and I'm sure you're all familiar with that, some of the book goes into the background. And of course, the announcement, the MRT route. The southern section, and to be really clear here, on the parade, needs to be resurfaced in the third week of March 2022. The safety improvement option would need to go through a TR process. And if we were to paint in the new scheme onto that road, so the timing is tight, but officers are confident we can get that done to get that third week of March date in 2022. So I have Daniel, Paul and Vida here to answer questions in detail.
Thank you, Mr. Hodget. So just for particularly people on Zoom now, we'll just take an orderly set of questions, if people have them. Who would like to start? councillor Young.
So just querying this figure on 2B cost up to 14 million Liam. So really in the papers, it was really saying 14 million was a guest limit, and it seemed to me that it could well cost more than that. Is that correct?
Thanks for the question, councillor. I'm just gonna get Dan and Paul to answer that and I'll unmute my mic.
So in the, sorry, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, right.
Right, sorry.
Councillor Young, you want to put your question?
So, so just to repeat the question, so in the 2B says a long-term improvement option cost up to 14 million. But in the papers, it really, the Tonkin and Taylor thing was really 14 was a guest limit and it could well cost more. Or have I misunderstood that?
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, they, within the Tonkin and Taylor report on page 44, table 4.1.2, have given a range of the cost for option 6I. And that range was 9.4 up to 17.1. However, when the long-term plan was approved, the approval to spend was up to 14 million. So officers would have to value engineer that to make sure we stayed within inside the budget that was provided.
So we don't have a very good record of staying within the budget for the Island Bay cycleway, which was originally going to be 1.4 million, and my notice of motion was concerned it might blow out to 2 million. Now we've spent approximately six and we're saying it could be another 17 points. These are gob-smacking figures. I mean, I feel ill. Does anyone else feel ill about this? Because we should, I mean, I.
It's possibly a debate and a bit emotive. Right.
It should be emotive. This is enormous.
Yes, okay, I think you've made, I think you've made your point. Right. Okay, so that's your speech then. Excellent. Right. Who else would like to ask some questions? It's not compulsory. Councillor Calvert.
I'd just like to ask officers why they continually refer to this as one of the options as a councillor-approved option, when it was actually council-approved. And it was actually an option led by the mayor. So whilst councillor, it was, there was a vote. So I'm just worried about why it's being singled out as a councillor-approved option, rather than a council-approved. Because we're, it's not all the elected members involved there.
Just is.
Right, yep. Sorry. So did you hear that question?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your councillor is correct. There is a council-approved option that was approved by councillors, the majority are at that time.
Would you be able to assure that it's all amended in whatever documents that you do reflect that accurately? Because it's in the Tonkin and Taylor report. It's just, and it's, it's a consistent mistake all the way through.
Yes, sir, there's a council-approved option. We will make sure we correct that.
Thank you. Liz Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you tell me, through you, Madam Chair, what are raised tables for the cycleways, paired with zebra crossings for pedestrians on side streets? What does that mean?
Again, we're talking here about raised tables being the crossing of the side roads brought up to footpath level. So that the motorist that's coming from the side road onto the main road would have to come up onto the table. And that table will be used for both people on bikes and people on foot to cross those side roads. Some may have a zebra crossing marked on top of them, but what we thought through most of the parade that the side roads would not have.
Okay, you're confusing me. Are you talking about a road or a table?
It's a platform across the road.
Sorry, can you just say that again? It's a bit muffled.
Are you talking about a road or a table?
I'm talking about a raised piece of the road.
All right. And is, and it's, is that what you call a raised table? So it's the actual road, it's not a table?
That's correct.
Right, okay, very confusing. Thank you.
Said all, Liz.
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Conde.
Thank you. I was just interested in what would be involved in preparing an area-based parking plan for this area and what the resource would be required and what the timelines might be on that.
Since we were able to undertake a park study, we're not proposing to.
So we can't, we can't hear you, Paul. I'm not sure what's wrong with the microphone. It's just a bit muffled. Okay, that's better. Thank you.
I didn't do anything. The, yes, well, we are able to do a park study. We weren't proposing to do one at this point. We believe that the study done in 2017.
Paul, are the rules permitting Paul to actually come in here? Is that all right? Paul, would it be all right if you just came through? I think it would be easier for councillors. Thank you. We've got one's free microphone. Thank you. They, they could all come on. Oh, hooray, Paul. But, but, but they could she, could they? But could they? So, so, sorry, Paul, Paul, sorry. We'll just make sure we've got the protocols right. So you can go to the microphone and then if Daniel then wants to talk, Daniel has to go to the microphone. Okay, so if you, right, so if you, yes, you might go to the microphone.
Now, what was the question?
Right, councillor Conde, this is on the parking plan.
Yes, it was about that. Yeah, so I mean, officers have advised that an area-based parking plan is not required under the parking policy. But I'm asking what would be involved if we, in preparing an area-based parking plan, what would the resource and timelines be on that if we wanted one?
So where parking would be under pressure. So if, if as a result of this work, we saw pressure into the, both the car parks remain on the main road and the pressure on the parking, the side roads. Council could then start a parking management plan and that would look at the allocation of those spaces that are available. So when demand outstrips supply, we would rationalise how parking was to be allocated. If it was only residents competing for lesser parks, we would then ration out which residents would have eligibility for those parks. The parking policy would suggest that we would start by restricting to perhaps one per household. So it's, it's quite a leaping there to a solution, but it starts with a survey to understand whether the demand meets the supply.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's my question is what's involved, like, what are the stages? What would be involved in doing that? How much work is it?
Well, it starts with a survey. We've done a survey in 2017. We don't believe anything has changed significantly. We've looked at the impact of infill housing. There seems to not be much of that. And so officer advice is that the parking surveys that were done in 2017 are still valid. We are able to repeat that if that's something councillors are of mind to.
Okay, thank you. No, it's actually councillor O'Neill next. And then you, councillor Fitzsimons, thank you.
Thank you. I was just wondering if we might be able to respond to a few of the submitters this morning that detailed they had not been consulted on the Island Bay cycleway. And just if you could roll through any of the process about consultation or litigation and stuff that council's gone through. Short summary.
So extensive consultation with the community. I was involved in the very first consultation right back when we started in 2013, 14. When we proposed the two options, the option that is there now and a variation on that which had the parking inside the cycleway. And of course, you'd be aware of, and the paper sets out all of the other engagements that have happened since, including the Love the Bay process. This council has, has heard a number of times from submitters and has made that call through the Love the Bay process and accepted that that was the, you know, council gave approval, so not councillor, but council gave approval to the process that came out of that. And now we're still trying to move towards it. We are talking here about the approval for either a safety improvement scheme or the long-term improvement scheme. Both of which have to go out for further consultation for a traffic resolution. So we're, so we're asking for approval to consult yet again, this time just with the traffic resolution, not opening it up for further debate as to what the best solution may be.
Yeah, plenty of opportunities, but not further debate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, I want to ask about this local area-based parking plan as well. Because in the parking policy, it says that the prince, there's a principle principally, which says introduce area-based planning to ensure more holistic travel and transport planning. That supports the best possible mix of active and public transport, off-street and on-street parking and footpath and vehicle usage. And then it talks about they'll be developed in discussion with the local community and residents, key employers, service providers and business stakeholders. So I really cannot understand why the council has brought us a paper that proposes potentially the removal of, I think it's 91, but by the paper it says 101, car parks without doing a local area-based parking plan. And on what basis can you say that the 2017 figures before this policy was even in place can apply now?
I was just, who was gonna answer that? Thank you, councillor. The, the triggers for when we apply the policy are set out in that and the questions and answers that officers responded to on this paper. We'll set out what those triggers are likely to be for when a parking management plan is required. We don't believe that these changes on the parade actually trigger the need for a parking management plan. We are able to do one. Happy that if, if the pressure on parking is such that it does meet that trigger, we're able to commence a parking, holistic parking management plan. The need for the change of the parking on the street is nothing to do with the parking policy. It's about the safety implication of a cycleway on the parade. Parking management plan is how we resolve the residual parking, not whether we should remove the parking or not.
So just a follow-up question. Did the council consider doing a local area-based parking plan and decide not to? Or did the council not even consider in preparation of this paper?
Certainly there was discussions at office.
And decided not to?
And decided not to.
Okay. My other question really is around, you know, this has been quite the process. And I really, you know, we've got, this council's got very ambitious plans to roll out cycleways all over Wellington in the next 10 years. What are the lessons that the council considers have been learned or need to be learned as a result of what happened in Island Bay? And to be fair, I did give the council officers a heads-up that I was asking this question because I do want it asked in public and answered in public.
Of course, that's fine.
You know, thank you through you, Madam Chair. I want to thank councillor Fitzsimons for the, for the question. You know, the important thing with change is that it's, you learn as you go. And when you do learn things, you effect change as you move on to the next project. And so the iterative process of what we've been embarking on, and particularly with Island Bay over the time, has informed quite a bit of our, our day-to-day work. So the first point I'd make is, is the need very, very clearly and upfront with both council and then of course the community is that we have a comprehensive plan for the city. It's staged, it's sequenced properly, it's funded, and that the long-term commitment is there for the community to see over time. And so this is not only locking down the, this particular corridor in Island Bay, but the broader network. And I believe we have that in the bike network plan. Again, it's an observation I made when I've been here now 12 months, that we needed something a little bit more comprehensive at the right elevation. To ensure that we have some clarity for both councillors, the community about what our intention is. And that's 147 kilometres of secondary and primary networks across the city. The second one is the engagement process. And I think we'll all be very conscious of Love the Bay process. But also the, the need from council officers, in particular their learnings, to be quite genuine and clear about what is possible when we enter into engagement processes with the community. to be quite genuine and clear about what is possible when we enter into engagement processes with the community and what is possible, I mean by what is actually safe and not safe in designs that we consult with. And from a comms and engagement point of view, our learnings from Love the Bay is that indeed, and Veda's team in particular, we now have embedded engagement and communications people in that team. They are sitting with the traffic engineers and the planners talking about how they take a dialect like a traffic engineer's language and convert that into real common laypeople speak. And I think that's a really important and quite a beneficial process. So I think a demonstration of that is the way Claire Pascoe's been communicating with the transitional programme. She's an excellent communicator and has come from that, for that background. The other and final point I'd make is costing expectations. You know, robust and accurate costings and the risk related to indicative costings are quite considerable and we need to be clearer on the uncertainties that exist around indicative costings for council to make decisions on. That can be improved by a couple of ways, but primarily it's managing of the project. So when you initiate and you plan before you execute, you may want to make sure you go through a number of stage gates in refining and getting to really robust costings because again, they create expectations that often aren't met. But they'd be my three observations and again to thank councillor Fitzsimons for your question.
Thank you councillor Foon.
Kia ora team, thank you. On page 44 of the TNT report, it also talks about benefits along the bottom line. So just two questions, we actually didn't see those benefits when we had the workshop and now they're there. So I just want to understand why we didn't see them the first time around. And then the next question is, can you unpack what those benefits actually consist of?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, look, these benefits have kind of been calculated by using the council's internal model. So it's kind of a really high-level model that just looks at user benefits and looks at safety at a high level and tries to analyse what the economic benefits are and it's in accordance with kind of NZTA analysis, benefit and cost analysis. So that's the numbers that's been calculated. What was the other part of your question, sorry? Look, I can't answer that, I think it doesn't really cover the whole story because this just purely looks at it from a transport point of view and looking at the benefit cost from simply economic evaluation of transport. But of course, when you look at Love the Bay and what they're trying to achieve is more kind of aesthetics and kind of renewal of the whole area, which can't actually be quantified so easily. So it kind of is a little bit misleading when you're only looking at transport benefits and then there's all of these other things that are not quantified.
Can you just, so safety was one of the benefits, economic benefits? Like, does that mean, can you just unpack that a little bit so we can understand?
Yeah, there's a graph in here somewhere and it covers the whole of life benefits of these projects. If I can just find it, just give me a second.
The deputy mayor has got a question, okay.
Unfortunately, I think it might be Daniel's place to answer it, but maybe someone else will.
Question of Liam?
Yeah.
No, no, you've got, you've found it, okay, good.
Yeah, so this here, so within this analysis, it's broken into a couple of bits. So one is the user benefits, one's the health benefits and one's crash costs. So user benefits is just how people are using it and how it's an improved level of service. It's basically tries to sum up whether user benefits are, health benefits is when you use it, how you gain health benefits. So I think, and again, and crash costs is of course a reduction in crashes and injuries and the costs associated with those. This is on page 42, benefits assessment. The whole of life benefits with both the Newtown connections and also without the Newtown connections on page 43.
Anything more? Oh, okay, so deputy mayor Free, do you want to ask now?
Yes, so look, I'm quite interested because Rongatai Road has a similar layout to some of the options for Island Bay, particularly with the concrete separators. Have we had any feedback at all from people in Rongatai Road or users of that cycleway as to how well that works?
Sorry, through you madam chair, not specifically about that style of design, the feedback we've had is that it's another part of an unconnected network. So it is about, you know, building networks, one of our learnings that Mr Hodges spoke about. But otherwise, that, you know, we're getting some good feedback. The Crawford Road is probably the one we've had the most feedback on, having that protected cycleway in Crawford Road. That's been absolutely tremendous, users of that and there's been a lot of users of that have expressed their gratitude towards us for that, but not so much on Rongatai Road, I'm not aware of any specific concerns or support for that.
I guess if you don't hear from people who park there and use those concrete separators, it generally means that they're not having issues, that tend to.
In the first month or so, we had a few issues around recycling and rubbish bins.
Right.
Resolve those.
Okay, you did talk about connecting and I guess one of my questions is if we've got a lot of resources tied up in delivering a very complicated, well, expensive option in Island Bay, does that mean we'd have less resources to do the rapid rollout and other things that we aspire to do, other cycleways?
And we did answer that question.
Yeah, yep.
There is, this paper's going to come to this committee, well, to council laws about the pressures we're under for resourcing both in our professional services and for our contractors. So it is a challenge. We have sufficient resource, we believe, to deliver the biggest scheme should you ask.
Okay, and my last question is about the current lane width in the shopping centre. I'm just trying to compare it to some of these options that we've got. So the current traffic lane width through the Island Bay shopping centre at the moment, it might be a question for Daniel, but maybe you don't.
They will have the cross-sections in front of them, I don't, yeah.
Okay, is the current one here in this paper?
In the Tonga and Taha report, it does set out cross-sections.
Okay, I've just been, there's a lot of information in here.
So through the safety improvement option that's in the paper, we're not proposing to do anything through the town centre other than to change the form of traffic calming there to move away from the speed cushions, to implement speed humps to further reduce traffic speeds. So for those on bikes that are sharing the traffic lane through the centre, hopefully even further reduction in traffic speeds so they can share safer.
If you do, if you have got that answer at some later stage.
Have you got the widths? Yeah, I'll turn to Daniel, I need to.
If we have a look at table 4.12 on page 44, about two-thirds of the way down the page there, it sets out what the traffic lane widths are. So of course combo 1A, traffic lane widths of 3.6 to 3.9, so they're quite wide lanes. All of the lane dimensions for the different options are there.
So the current lane widths as it is right now?
Yeah, so if it's unchanged, it'll be 3.6 to 3.9, that's what's set out in the report here.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rush.
Thanks very much. Just want to understand, the TNT report proceeded on the basis of a dedicated lane, which I understand was based on either the council or approved configuration. And the other, I had no problem with it actually. Mural approved might have been better. So there was that one and then the other one was the recommended one, which was the TNT recommended view, which was also a dedicated lane. The previous configuration, I understand, is known as a mixed shared, what are called. So I'm trying to understand, I guess, is that we've now seen crash data which is showing that this new configuration is worse than the previous one. And there's obviously a local call to change it all back, which, you know, I know there's problems there. But I'm trying to understand why was the TNT report here limiting itself in terms of options to only dedicated lanes rather than looking at the mixed use, which I understand is actually pretty common in a lot of parts of New Zealand, depending on the types of roads and so on.
Okay, so through you, madam chair, the, south of the shopping centre, prior to the current scheme that we see there now being put in place, south of the shopping centre, there was a traffic side cycle lane in the blocks. They, we put signs up and, and I did this work. So back in the late 90s, we put traffic lanes and adjacent to the parking, between the traffic lane and the parking lane was a cycle lane. When we got to intersections, we put signs up saying cycle lane ends and through the intersection itself, we prioritised the turning movement. So there was no cycle lanes between the, at the intersections and we did that from Reef Street through to the town centre. North of the shops, there was no cycle lane at all, big wide median through that section. The intro, and so I guess south of the shops, you could call it a traffic side cycle lane and north of the shops was a mixed traffic lane that those on bikes just mixed in with buses, trucks and cars.
Yeah, I mean, just on that, I understand that there was actually a cycle lane, but we repaved and then.
There was never a cycle lane north of the shops.
Okay, that's something which the community disagree, but anyway, carry on.
Never.
Yeah.
What's south of the shops, for three blocks out of the shops?
Okay, so.
And then, and so the advice we had at the time and that went to council, so we brought it to the council of the time between the options A and B, which is inside the parking, outside the parking, with evidence as to which was safer and the best practice design at the time. That still is, is that for the volume of traffic, the speed of the traffic, mix of heavies within that traffic is that a protected cycle lane, a separated cycle lane is the preferred design. Now, with or without parking, putting those on bikes behind a barrier of some sort was absolutely the right way to go for that environment. And we've set out that as the standard that we're proposed to introduce as part of the bike network plan, so we haven't moved away from that. So if we were to, when we bring the bike network plan, that will be inclusive of a set of standards of how we would apply a bike network across Wellington, and we would then do a similar style lane in Island Bay again. And that was the point that really the, that Mr Hodges was making and one of the learnings from Island Bay is that when we went into the Love the Bay process, the technical guidance would always lead us to have a protected cycle lane of some sort.
Yeah.
Now, the community went into that process believing that they would participate in a way that would see that they'd get something different from that, but it was never an option for that environment.
Okay, and the community is still.
And they still believe that returning it to a traffic side cycle lane was the safe option.
Yeah, we have seen though that the crash data, both the official and the unofficial that I believe they have been recording is showing, and I'm not sure whether it's, I mean, I understand that there are some concerns around having these types of lanes around residential streets with multiple driveways where people drive in. You can see how that's a problem, is there standards around trying to avoid those types of issues?
Standards that we now want to apply to that, which those standards weren't around when we did this, you know, seven, eight years ago, when we were setting up the design. And certainly circulated a link to the standard, the guidance that's coming from Waukatahi is that for a curbside protected lane, a three-metre setback from vehicle crossings is suggested. Where there's a row of parked cars up to the driveway, even a five-metre setback may be more beneficial.
Sure, but the guidelines from NZTA don't rule out doing mixed road use. In fact, they seem to say, which I looked at anyway, that this is pretty common, depending on how wide the road is. So did we look at just how wide the road is and whether it actually met those requirements for a shared lane? Or did we decide that this is how Wellington wants our cycle network to be and that's how it's going to be?
Yeah, look, to meet the guidance and achieve the best we could possibly achieve, we would go for a separated cycleway. And the parade, there's nothing to stop us, a road controlling authority, not to do that. However, we are able to achieve a higher standard, which is the recommendation before you and it was the recommendation given to a previous council that gave the commitment through that Love the Bay process to commit to continuing with curbside protected cycleways.
Sure, I don't want to carry on with this, but the data is showing that we're actually getting more accidents with this configuration. Are those accidents coming from, my daughter was down there, she opened up a car door, but there wasn't anyone there. But are they coming from that or is it just higher volumes?
So we're just not consistent with the current safety advice, which is the setbacks from the driveways so that we don't have the three-metre setback, in some cases with less than a metre setback. And we're not setback within that 30 metres of intersections, so that's the recommendation before you.
Okay.
And either option, even in the long-term option where we widened the road to accommodate some more parking, we would still have three-metre setbacks from driveways and 30-metre setbacks from intersections. And we believe that will go a long way towards improving the safety of those on bikes on the parade.
Sure. But it will also obviously eliminate a lot of choice for other road users wanting to park and potentially businesses and so forth, right? I mean, is there any balanced, flexible approach here to, when would you use a shared cycleway?
In low-volume, low-speed streets.
Right, so Rongatai, is that, is that one of those ones?
Which road?
Rongatai.
Rongatai Road?
Yeah.
No, that's, again, that would be similar traffic volumes that we're seeing in the parade. And again, there we selected a protected curbside cycleway.
Okay, sorry, I had a lot of questions.
It's probably.
Unfortunately, the Q and A was not that great. I mean, I did ask about clearways as well and you got told that it's not practical.
Okay, so can we just, I want to ask a question and so can you come back onto the list? Liam, I've got a question for you. So I have suggested to my colleagues that it's probably not a great idea for us to be traffic engineers today. Deputy Mayor Free's got an engineering degree, but not in this particular discipline of engineering. So I get that you're saying in some ways this is a governance call and it's a political call, but ultimately if someone is seriously injured or killed on the parade, it will be staff in front of the coroner's court. And I guess I want some professional advice about what is the safest option to do, given that we have got MRT. And I think, you know, we've been given, the Tonga and Taha report was really useful, but I just think we should not be really even making this decision in some ways, it is an operational one. And I just wanted a response to that, this is quite serious, you know, like.
Madam Chair, I mean, the options we've given you. I'll come to councillor Fitzsimons' question later if you want. So madam chair, the options are, yes, the traffic engineers providing their best possible advice based on guidance and the immediate conditions of that road. I haven't been in front of the coroner, I understand Mr Barker has twice, so he can talk to what that experience is like. But yes, when there is a fatality potentially on roads and it is pointed towards a design flaw, often councillors or the traffic engineers responsible are answering questions in court. But I'm not sure whether that removes any of the decision-making powers as such. We have given you two decisions to make today. I guess from an officer point of view, we're just cautioning how you might make that decisions and if any additions or amendments might be happening, that they receive the right advice from Mr Barker and the team.
Do you think, Mr Hodges, that this puts us in a slightly tricky position? I appreciate it was difficult for you to come up with an option, but nevertheless, it is a technical decision.
But both options comply with traffic engineer advice and guidelines, so I don't think that's an issue. I think if you were to add aspects to it that are general enough, then we'll provide advice. If you recall, we will be coming back in March with a detailed design. If you want us to have a look at anything more on top of what that safety option looks like, we will and we will again provide you with advice in terms of its safety. So that's not an actual problem today, I believe. As long as the matters you're possibly introducing are not going to put us beyond the realms of possibility, but we'll advise you on that if you do in debate anything further.
Okay, thank you, councillor Day. Councillor Day.
So my question sort of follows on from that. So if we do sort of a bit of a hodgepodge approach, which I know there's some amendments from councillor Pannett around that, which is kind of picking bits out of it, if there is an accident, does that mean that it then comes back to us as the decision-makers because we've deviated from a clear recommendation or, you know, clearly agreed full proposal?
So will it be- I've got you on the list for this second.
Yeah, thanks, through you, Madam Chair, that's, I think that's a PCBU question, and I'm not an expert on that. It, you know, there are responsibilities that council have under the act, as does the CE, but unfortunately I don't have that sort of experience to answer that question.
Okay, but just to be clear, I took an engineering option. Right, so councillor Foon, you're on second time round, and then Free, Rush and Fitzsimons.
I'll try and keep this really clear. What I'm looking for is a relationship between the long-term version, what the bulk costs are in that, am I understanding therefore the raising of the curb and the water pipe system underneath?
That's right.
Stormwater, yeah.
So the safety improvement scheme sets out the same dimensions, pretty much north of the shops that we would get with the long-term option. The long-term option south of the shops does see some widening of the carriageway. So we would first off move the footpath back towards the Poota Carwasmore, so that gets some widening of the road, and we would do that to accommodate the parked cars. And then the, what is currently a cycleway gets elevated.
Right, yeah.
And so the cars would park against a new curb, and that curb would be a lower profile than the current curb. That then traps the water, and that water's got to be captured and put into a drainage system. And so that's sitting two metres out from the current curb, and it needs a whole new curb line with regular sumps to collect the stormwater and then dispose of those into the stormwater system. Then at the back of that cycleway, because of the slope of the road, that would drain back towards the existing footpath, and so the existing sumps would need to remain, but they would then be in the cycleways, so the boxes have to be altered. So quite a bit of work in drainage. And we create this dish, so the cycleway slopes back and the footpath slopes forward, and so we create this new stormwater system out there. So we end up on each side of the road, two parallel stormwater systems, two plots of curb and channel.
And what-
And that's where the significant cost comes in in constructing that, the stormwater and the concrete path that those on bikes would ride on, as well as then the widening south of the shops. And that's the big step.
Yeah, yeah.
The difference. The other is that across all of the side roads, we continue the footpath and cycleway levels across the side roads. So those on, coming out of the side streets have to come up over the footpath, over the cycleway, before they join the parade.
And then what, so would that be around a third or a quarter of the cost?
Of the four-
Long-term, yeah.
No, probably more like three quarters of the cost to do all of those changes.
Okay. And then how long, what would the lifespan expectancy of that be?
Anything we do in concrete, the stormwater system, the curb and channel, if it was a concrete path or even if it was an asphalt path, but certainly anything in concrete, we'd expect to sort of get a 50 to 70 to 100 year life out of those.
Okay.
Ashfelt, we would be looking for a path, still again, to get sort of 30 or 40 years' life out of an asphalt path.
Thank you, Paul, that's great.
Through councillor, Deputy Mayor Free. I guess this is a question for Liam. Liam, given that it might be quite a long time before Let's Get Wellington Moving actually arrives, and given that we've heard today from, and in the past too, from a lot of people using the cycleway that through the shops is not safe, how can we defend a position such as option B? You know, because we describe it as a safety improvement, is it option B, the safety improvements option, the lower cost option? It does have some safety improvements through the residential area, but offers very little improvements through the town centre. And what we've been told is children are having to ride past angle parking to complete the journey. So, I mean, as we've talked about, if there's a problem, we may be accountable. How can we actually defend a position where we're waiting until MRT arrives and approve that? If the idea is to actually make some improvements? I mean, it seems to me like we've got one end of the extreme and the other end of the extreme almost.
Yeah, I think I might pass it over to Vida. We've had this conversation before, but it's important to note that, you know, either options and anything added to this decision today, we can get back to you in March on whether we can make it work or not.
I'm through you, Madam Chair. So what is being proposed here is the safety improvements options without the town centre or the choice of the long-term improvements. We, through the LTP, you also said that you wanted us to go ahead and do the town centre upgrades for Island Bay and Barumpore. And that is a separate lot of funding that we'll be coming back with and doing that work. Starting from the beginning of next year, we've got a new person on board that is, that's going to be their primary thing. So at that time, what we were proposing that we'd look at that as a whole town centre. You can also decide to go through the town centre separately and then just do a smaller scope of the town centre improvements. But it was not the intention to wait until MRT came through to improve the town centre safety.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, I just had a suggested process. Given councillors aren't coming up with any new amendments right now on the fly and we are just re-understanding the paper, what if we moved on to the first amendments and then just asked questions on those, rather than relitigating options in the paper now and understanding, but I wanted to gauge-
Do people feel comfortable, because there might still just be some generic questions that was all not just on the amendments?
Well, you could still ask those-
It's 10 to 5. We do have quite a big agenda tomorrow as well, so what would people like to do? We can keep debating or we can-
We could start debating.
Oh, sorry, feels like debate, Shaun. So do you want to just keep going?
I own it. There are a few of us that have obligations after quarter past 5. I certainly need to leave by quarter to 6.
My son's already texted me.
Yeah, you know, I want to be involved in this. Let's go as far as what we can, but seriously, yeah, if we, some of us have had a day at regs as well.
We might actually have to vote on that particular thing, because I don't think you're going to get a unanimous agreement on how to proceed.
Yeah, and sorry, yeah, yeah, and no, I, yeah, yeah, and that's what I thought. But look, we also just, given where we're at in terms of the time and people asking lots of questions, which is fine, but just need to make sure that people are as happy as possible, okay? Right, so let's just finish the questions for now, councillor Rush and then councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, Paul, just, sorry. So I just want to understand, so this kind of configuration which requires a, you know, new guttering and stormwater, is that going to need Wellington Water to connect it up to the existing systems?
No, Wellington Water, they don't do the work, so our contractors that we engage would connect it up to the system.
Yeah.
But it then becomes a Wellington Water asset.
Yeah, so if this is our configuration across the city, that is a significant number of pipe work and new pipes.
So the configuration to roll out across the city may not be a, which is called the Copenhagen style.
Yeah, yeah.
It may not be that, it may be more like the Rongatai Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is using curb separators. But that's not what came out of the process of Love the Bay. That was, that was the upper end, hence the cost of the 14 million. We certainly wouldn't be looking to that level of cost formally across the city. That's not allowed for in the funding for the 147 kilometre bike network.
I don't take it out of my water budget. Can I just ask one more thing about Love the Bay then? I mean, because the Love the Bay, as I can understand it, culminated in a third-party independent review of options, and the folks overwhelmingly came back saying they wanted to use the revert option, I think it was, of seven and a half thousand people. It was incredible response to the survey, incredible, seven and a half thousand saying to revert, and the next best was four and a half or something. Is that right?
Is that the question?
Well, I'm just asking, so I'm just wondering, you mentioned that out of Love the Bay came this sort of configuration, but actually what I read out of Love the Bay came a desire for it to go back.
So what I'd said is that out of the Love the Bay process, a council decision, so not council law, a council decision, was to accept a protected cycleway was the future for the parade.
Got you, got you, thank you.
So Liz Kelly and Simon Wolf, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Okay, I'm just, yeah, standard that the majority of the cost of the, what's said to be the 14 million is in the pipes and the stormwater. I'm just wondering what the condition of the pipes and the stormwater are currently. You know, I haven't heard in my time at council that they're up for renewal or, yeah, you know, can I have some feedback on that please?
Look, it's, I'm not going to hear a comment, it's not an area I'm an expert in, so I'm not in a position to be able to comment on those, other than I know with the last 20 years they've all been upgraded. The work that we were doing after the 2017 decision to advance that design did not address that upgrading the stormwater system was required, that was just the new connections to the existing stormwater that were required.
And certainly just a different question. We heard from a submitter in relation to the emergency services situation, I think I heard that the road space is going to be no different. Is this going to be safer for our emergency services and also our public transport? Because in talking to bus drivers over the last three or four days, they certainly are unhappy with the safety aspects of the parade as it is currently.
So we are addressing those concerns. The section south of the town centre where it is narrower, and that's where we have the greatest concerns with buses not passing one another and emergency services getting stuck. There, in order to get the wider traffic lanes, is where we have to remove parking from one side of the parade. And the long-term option, we propose to widen that section of the parade to accommodate parking on both sides and wider traffic lanes. But that's some of the additional cost that is required. So in the safety improvement options, yes, we are widening the traffic lanes all the way through. All the way through that southern section, the northern section is adequate.
Right, any other questions, councillor Wolf? No. Liz Kelly, do you have any questions?
I didn't actually, but I'm just trying to get this clear in my head about what's being proposed. And it seems to me that if the bulk of the 14 million that is being suggested to spend on this is going to be in pipes and underground, why would we be doing it now?
That's right. Come on, you, Liz.
I'm not sure, that's a question for me.
That's right.
Sorry, I was just trying to get some advice from the committee advisor. Sorry, Liz Kelly.
I didn't mean it to be funny, Simon.
So certainly the-
That's a very good question.
The cost is not just in the stormwater system, it is, that's the escalation, it's the infrastructure, the raised concrete or asphalt path itself, the stormwater system accommodate that, the crossings over the side roads, that's where the costs lie.
So what, the two to three million that you're suggesting then, what's that going to do? Is that just doing some pretty stuff?
No, it's going to set back parking from the driveways, it provides a physical separator between the parking lane and the cycle lane. At the moment, there is no physical separator, it's a white painted line. And many people that are parking there choose not to park with inside the parking bay or they can't, because they can't tell where they are in the road and they park haphazardly. By providing a separator, it provides something to park up against.
So can you confirm though that if we spent this two to three million doing what you've just said now, that that work is safe and as much as it's not going to get ripped up when the further maintenance that's required for our infrastructure is done?
So advice there is that that wouldn't get ripped up for maintenance, so we would be able to maintain the network around this work that we're proposing for the safety improvements. However, if the Let's Get Wellington Mass Rapid Transit was to be constructed on the parade, inevitably all of it would be removed and replaced.
Well then, that's just a waste of money, both proposals, isn't it?
That's for debate, Liz Kelly.
Okay.
Right. Have you got any more questions? Yeah, yeah, I know, no, I'm just-
No, no, thank you, Jordan.
Right, councillor Day and then councillor Calvert, just questions of officers.
Yeah, my question is just, we're making, we're putting a lot in the fact that the Let's Keep Wellington Moving decision is coming up. Do we have any idea of how far the MRT would actually go into Island Bay? Because I'm aware of like tsunami kind of things, we might be assuming that it's going to impact on more of the cycleway than it will.
So you'll be aware that the four designs that are out for consultation all go to Reef Street. So the current designs all go to Reef. They haven't gone as far as determining where the terminus would be, and whether the terminus would be in the parade in the middle of the road and just stop at Reef Street, or whether it had some sort of turning facility, but that would come at future parts of design of MRT.
Thank you, councillor Calvert.
Yeah, just a quick clarification, you said that you potentially would be coming back to this council in March next year with detailed design, but I thought the work had to be done by the end of March. Is that, I'm just trying to figure out why you'd even bother coming back to us in March if you really-
So through you, Madam Chair, the council would need to give approval to a traffic resolution that gives effect to that design. So you're in the paper, it's a very tight timeframe. If we were to, if, sorry, if you were to choose the safety improvements option today or tomorrow morning perhaps, we would then develop the traffic resolution to support that. We propose to advertise that after Wellington anniversary for three weeks, so mid-February, so even that is tight, three week engagement on the traffic resolution. We would then bring back those that wish to speak to councillor laws on that traffic resolution late in February. That would enable officers to write the report, and at this stage, we've pencilled in the 9th of March for a decision on that traffic resolution to be made, and that would be two weeks, 14 days before the road would be remarked as part of resurfacing. So we would bring back, and so that design that we would take out with the traffic resolution would be the, the design would see exactly which car parks would remain, which would have to be removed, would have cross-sections of what the design would be, and into a good engagement around what it is that's coming. But we're not in a position to share that, because we haven't developed that fully, and that will be developed ready to go out post Wellington anniversary weekend.
Okay, thank you. Right, any final questions, councillors? Okay, so I'm now going to move a motion, sorry, that's just why I've been talking to Hadi. So if you can just put that on the screen, thank you. Councillor Paul will second. Deputy Chair. So, yes, so, well, sorry, I might just need your advice on that, because we're just not going to be sure when we're going to be finished after Wellington Water. Could we do 10.30?
Yes.
Or 10.45 in the day?
No, you've got another committee, haven't we?
Yes, that's what I'm just talking about. So this is what I discussed with the chair, is that we are going to adjourn, I'm going to put that motion up, and then we're just figuring out, Shaun, when it's going to fit in with your committee.
Well, I, you know, I guess when we discussed it was a day or two ago and hadn't really thought about it, so, I mean, I would have gone, I don't, I'm not even sure what the agenda is, we've got Wellington Water coming first thing.
So public participation for 20 minutes, then Wellington Water's coming.
Could we adjourn this meeting to Friday, so not interfere with the infrastructure one tomorrow?
It would be... So this, no, this has been, this has been because we have, we had to do this as well, and we have had a very heavy week, all right, and are having a heavy week. So we are going to, I'm going, so councillor Rush- So, so we are going to, I'm going, so councillor Rush, would it be all right if we started debate again at 10.45?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So that's what I'm going to move, councillor Paul is going to second. Councillors, I'm just trying to be as flexible and find a solution, but quite a few people are leaving and need to go. And I think we have, quite a few of us have been in debate most of today and have had other obligations. So I would like us to adjourn and reconvene tomorrow. Councillor Paul will second, do you wish to speak? No, yes, councillor O'Neill.
Just to clarify.
It would be like the special plan, wasn't it?
From when are we adjourning?
Sorry?
From when, like as soon as you pass this motion, we will close the meeting? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, 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 thank you. Any other questions? Just actually, we'll do questions first and then anyone who wants to speak. Sure.
So can you explain, I'm not even really understanding how tomorrow's going to go. Like, is this, so the other meeting's happening first, or this is happening first? Because we're not going to.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, infrastructure will open at 9.30 as scheduled. We've got public participation until 9.50. Wellington Water is coming for the first item. So so long as we through the first item by 9.45, we can then adjourn infrastructure.
10.45.
Sorry, 10.45, and then reconvene planning and environment.
And we will have a more fundamental discussion about our agendas, because.
We could have predicted this.
Well, no, but councillor Day, actually, can you please, just with a little bit more respect, we have a very heavy workload at the moment, okay? So we're just trying to get through everything as efficiently as possible, and people wanted to ask questions. Councillor Fitzsimons.
This isn't a question, it's just a matter for debate. Can I just ask that chairs prioritise items on the agenda that are time-sensitive? The last item wasn't time-sensitive, but it was prioritised over this one. It's your discretion, but I'm just asking that when something is time-sensitive, you don't prioritise it down the agenda.
But this isn't, neither of them are necessarily time-sensitive, would be my response.
That's the message that we're getting, I mean, I sort of agree with you, but that's the message I'm getting. I'm just asking.
In terms of making a decision over the next couple of days. And I'm just trying to accommodate everyone, because we've had people coming and going and needing to be in different places. Councillor O'Neill.
I just have a bit of a question to councillors, so I'm happy for this to be counted as a debate. How many councillors have made other plans from 5.15 and would not be able to be here?
And the mayor's not back yet as well. Councillor Wolf, sorry, councillor Wolf, councillor O'Neill has just asked if you've got plans after quarter past five tonight.
I've got plans now, I thought this meeting was supposed to finish at five.
The reason being that in standing orders, normally we are supposed to stay until all business is completed, up to the discretion of the chair to re-adjourn, and then something would be amended. But I am just pointing out that we probably should have kept our diaries clear as we have previously for every other committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry, some of us have been debating since.
Like, yeah, same, but I just am listing that as a part of my debate. Yeah, thanks for asking my question.
And that's, and that's fine, that's fine, so, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes, councillor.
This is, this is actually a second infrastructure meeting of a month, quite soon after another one. It's quite unusual. It wasn't supposed to happen under the WINDA. But therefore, yeah, I would recommend that it would be good practice if we did adjourn and come back tomorrow.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you councillor Wolf, councillor Conde.
Thank you, I think, while I agree that it is good practice to not schedule things, I think we're in this situation now where I think eight councillors have scheduled things. And I think that we just need to move on from that situation with a pragmatic solution, which I think is this. So I thank the councillor for bringing it, and I will look forward to supporting, to voting for it.
Thank you. Right, councillor O'Neill.
Somebody just raised the point that under the WINDA review, instead of scheduling an extraordinary delay of this meeting, why wouldn't Shaun just chair this paper tomorrow as a question?
Okay, so councillor O'Neill, it's possibly not the most helpful thing. We've got two papers from Pura Kauasmore tomorrow.
I know, but just to understand good governance, I'd like to stick to.
So councillor, councillor O'Neill, I have asked for another item in the agenda to be put on the infrastructure committee meeting, that was the medium-density housing, because otherwise we were going to have to have a separate, another one, a fourth Pura Kauasmore committee. And I am the chair of this meeting, and we are trying to get away through. I have spent a lot of time actually talking to most of you to find a solution. And I have come up with a compromise. We've got people coming up with all sorts of different options. So I would like, and there was one particular option, which I don't think has gone through officer advice yet, and I would like that to happen tonight, if possible, please. So, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Councillor Calvert.
Yes, look, I'll support this, and I think you should continue chairing this paper, because we've already started. If we hadn't put it on this agenda, it might have been a different situation. But because you've already, we've had question time, I just think it might be a bit disjointed to have a different chair, so I'm supportive of this carrying on.
Ms Mueller's had some advice on this point.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. The WINDA review advised that committee papers could go to different committees, but that's prior to agenda publication. This item is on the agenda for planning and environment, so it should stick with this committee.
Right, councillor Day.
With all respect, I think it is really important, we keep having this conversation, particularly at this committee, just around how we're managing our agenda. And I think we just have to remember, and I keep saying this, if every person around this table speaks only for three minutes, that's over 45 minutes, and that's one paper. Three hours was never going to work for this meeting, and we should have really thought about that much earlier. And I keep saying, we need to plan appropriately. And we always knew that Island Bay paper was going to take a long time. So I think, yeah, we just need to apply a bit more thinking, a bit more than just a few days before. And let's work together on that.
Yeah, yeah, and absolutely, but there was a regs meeting this morning. Otherwise, of course, we would have started at 9.30. And we shouldn't be having two committees in a week. This is, otherwise then we've got some more time. Three, three, right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Right, I don't need to exercise a right of reply, if we could please vote. So Liz Kelly and councillor Wolf, we are now voting to, I'll just, so just so that you're absolutely clear, agree to extend the meeting beyond six hours as standing order 11.7, adjourn the meeting until 10.45 11th of November. Thank you, is that clear to you?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You still have to turn up at 9.30 though.
Yes, you do. Please don't be late.
It's quite an important point, actually, who's going to be on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Right, so the meeting is now finished. Councillor Rush, do you want to just, have people got some questions about how you want to manage your?